Good morning, everyone. Curry County, Oregon Board of Commissioners. Nine o'clock on August 18th, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was pretty good unison. So, I'm not going to do a line of duty death casually today. I'm going to talk just for a moment about what is going on in Afghanistan. They're saying now we may have 15,000 Americans stranded there. Not to mention little girls that might be in slavery, Taliban slavery forever. Whether you wanted us there in Afghanistan or not, we haven't had another 911 in 20 years. So many American soldiers gave so much there. And the way this is unwound is absolutely crushing and unprecedented. Negative consequences for our country, we don't know what that's going to be in the next 20 years, 20 weeks. So for the people that we've lost and the people that we may not be able to bring home, we need to consider a lot of prayer, a lot of concern, and a lot of hope that they all come home, if in fact that number is accurate. Doesn't matter if it's 1,000 or 20,000. We need to get them out of there. Incredibly costly lesson. So, a lengthy moment of silence if we could, Board. Thank you again. So, really appreciate that moment of silence. I have an announcement to make. So bear with me. I also want to do a COVID report, but I can wait till it's on the agenda item as we proceed into our meeting. The Curry County Commissioners Herzog and Pash, after considerable thought since last Wednesday, will be stepping down as board chair effective at the end of our meeting today. Will need to elect new officers, agenda item number 11. After Monday morning failing to get an agreement from the other two Commissioners on scheduling a simple Curry COVID emergency meeting and two yesterday getting the terrible news that we're averaging, on a seven-day average, 29 new Curry County positive cases per day, almost 30 per day. I feel after four years and eight months of dedication to and preparing for this position and for our citizens, I can no longer justify wasting time trying to lead this current Board. In 2016, I only made two promises to the citizens of Curry County. That was no one would outwork me and no one would care more. And I'm proud to say I've kept that promise, those promises, and kept my word. I'll never compromise my commitment to the special people of Southwest Oregon. I've been a fighter in the proper sense and will always be a full-time working Commissioner. My decision will free me up to work on even higher levels of my 10-plus most important and ongoing projects for Curry and our citizens. On the issues, the list is vast, including blocking the out-of-control spending I believe is rampant in our county. Further focus on these issues needs and deserving more and vigorous attention are as follows. So what do I have to do here again? The public can read. These have all had substantial time invested in the four and a half years I've been here. Catastrophic fire awareness, prevention, response, suppression, and recovery. Oregon and especially Curry County remain at extreme fire risk levels. Curry leads. COVID, living in a pandemic world, planning and preparing our county, likely not free of the pandemic and related for five years would be my guess, anyone's guess. As I mentioned, I'll have much to say on this later on in our agenda. KUS Curry Housing Task Force, critical housing needs and the accelerating growth of our homeless community. Commissioner Kribas and I worked on and were awarded $145,000 grant from Oregon Housing and Community Service. Curry leads. Public safety, law and order, protect, support, and properly fund our law enforcement. Curry leads. Curry water planning drought conditions persist. All Curry utilities need our assistance, wisely preparing for an uncertain water future. Curry leads. Rogue Siskiyou Curry Wildfire Training Center, we know, excuse me, we now have the state funds for full property acquisition and many grants and pledges received to date. A huge thanks to State Representative Brock Smith. This puts us into the next phase of working for federal funds, and we have some very good leads there. Curry leads. One of my favorites is a collaborative forest restoration grant Southern Oregon, a three-to-four year process. It takes time, but we're moving up on the list. $40 million over 10 years for critical fire fuel abatement. Another one I'm very excited about and spent two years on this offshore wind renewable carbon-free energy, tremendous Curry opportunities for employment, our economy, and our environment. Curry leads. Emergency rental and landlord assistance, substantial state funding coming our way for both renters and landlords. I hope to have something to report on that on the first. Working with Neighbor Works Umpqua on that project, Oregon Coast Community Action, and our Curry County Housing Coordinator. Curry leads. Veteran Service Office, $1.6 million remodel on our community development block grant, and then also on our Port Orford Community Center, that's a $1.2 million remodel. We stand in very good chances of getting both of those projects completed. I'm working with KUS Curry Douglas Business Development, Business Oregon, and they couldn't be more helpful. I want to give a little shout out. This is where the picking up on the work started by former Curry County Commissioner Susan Brown on the Curry Youth Head Start Program in Brookings. That was again, 1.6 million. Our mental and behavioral health upgrades, significant state funds will be available. Working with State Representative Brock Smith, Curry, OHA Mental Health, and our Curry Medical Community, we're positioning our county for healthy competition, working for these important resources. Curry County, new jail courthouse projects because of my, I assume because of my relationships with state legislators, contacts around Oregon, Association of Oregon Counties, and my background at the state Capitol, this Board earlier this month requested I not take the lead on this project. Beginning my fifth-year service on the Southern Oak Death Task Force, development of the Oregon Coast Trail, Wilderness Coast Forest Collaborative Board, KUS Curry Douglas Business Development Board, Association of Oregon and Association of ONC Board of Directors. I'm the Board Chair and Advanced Health Adviser, the Advanced Health Advisory Committee, Board Chair in the Southwest Oregon AOC Five County District. The Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association, very important, I'm on that Board. The Southern Oregon Workforce Investment Board, and I shall never give up on this Board finally choosing to hire at some point a grant writer slash COVID relief housing development specialist. I want the people to know that I'm the only Curry Commissioner of the last four to fully commit to the AOC County College Program since then Curry Commissioner David Brock Smith attended. Certainly, much more though he than I, millions of project funding has come back to our county. The AOC benefits of this education for our citizens are without equal. I believe that Curry County's best days are ahead. It's time, though, to roll up our sleeves and work together, everyone. So today, Board, if I may, again, I'll request the list under Other, a new election of Curry Commissioner Board positions. I have no interest in serving as Vice Chair. I'm going to focus on these 12 or 14 major issues in all the Boards. Do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Herzog?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So moving on the agenda, Amendment Agenda Items or Asking for Approval Board. Mr. Herzog, you're first.
I'd like to move M, which is Curry County Board of Commissioners Discussion, Consideration and Response to COVID Surge, to the first thing. If that's, you know, move that to A. If that's agreeable?
Certainly with me, Commissioner.
I'm fine with that. Like to pull F?
You want to get reasoned for that, or?
I think with the, what you just read, I think it's a mood issue.
I agree with that.
Also, was Treasure Barnes going to ask for my resignation or something? Why don't we get it out in the open here? I mean, it was so vague, it was absolutely ridiculous, so...
I agree with removing it from the, thank you.
I agree.
So we're not going to discuss it, though, and see what the basis behind it was? Another harassment, another attack? So we're removing that. You want to speak to that, Treasure Barnes? No. Wow. So Commissioner Herzog, you still have the floor.
N, put in executive session?
Put what in?
N.
N?
N.
Okay. Well, put N into executive session. Gotcha.
Yep.
And I was thinking that way until we heard from former Director of Operations with some additional charges, so I'm going to impose that and keep it out before the public.
And I just, I spoke with County Council, and that was his recommendation that we do it in executive session, so that's my reasoning behind that.
I can just say, because it is going to discuss some possible liability issues for the county and also personnel, so I think it's better to be done behind closed doors.
Commissioner Pash?
I'm fine with that.
Well, I shall be agnostic on that, so I don't think we need a vote then. I think we have two Commissioners in favor of putting item seven in. Curry County Request for Professional Appropriated and Long-Overdue Inquiry Independent Investigation on the Boys, Co., Part 20, 20 Camp Post Departures and Related Issue, into executive session. Commissioner Herzog, anything else?
No, sir.
I have one. Commissioner Pash?
I have Lieutenant Denny here from the Sheriff's Department, and we may have Wendy Lang here also. And I would like to move my, gosh, where was I? Wait, I'm on the steering.
J, is it?
Okay.
Yeah, the lipstick. Up to, we've got A now, so can we move that to B?
The J to B?
Yes.
Who's keeping, helping me keep track of this?
Well, I think we all three can.
Yes, I think we can get it figured out. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to poll on Consent Agenda Minute Meeting 6A for discussion, possible Can I get an okay on that?
So we're going to move that to 7Q?
Very in?
7Q?
Very good. The public thanks. We're moving fast here. Appreciate your patience. And then the only other thing I had was item 6K. I just want to see the form on that. I've never seen that form.
It's out there, and that's...
So we don't need to poll that, though. I just, I want to make sure I get a form. That would come under County Council, Park Office Manager.
Yeah, we'll get you a copy of it.
Also, I apologize, I'm going to poll, ask the Board here to poll 7B. We did not get the, Mr. Fortner, Vietnam veteran, is unable to attend a day, last minute, so we'll move that to 91. I'm sorry to the community, I don't have a veteran to proclaim Curry County honoring them, although we could do Gordon Clay. I don't see him here. I see he's done a...
He's out there in his...
He's out there, huh? Okay, so we'll poll 7B. I wanted more information on 7F. I strongly disagree with being non-transparent for the public about that. And then the only other thing I had, Board, was 7I and L. I think it would be prudent and probably time-saving to combine those two.
I agree.
I agree.
So that's, so we just make that 7I? Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I don't think I have, hang on one second. No, that's all I have.
Motion to amend the agenda as, or approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the question, please.
Commissioner Pash?
Yes.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Public comments, we're going to hold it to pretty close to three minutes. There is an exception, a pre-scheduled two-item matter. Mary Rowe, you are first, welcome. And Mary, by the way, on the agenda topic, you're always very good about being pretty specific on that, which I appreciate.
Oh, thank you.
Do you need more than three minutes?
No, I have two comments. Thank you very much for allowing me to make two comments, and they will come in under six minutes, so thank you. Thank you, Chair Boyce, for allowing me to make two public comments. I'm Mary Rowe. Thank you for listening to me, Chair Boyce, and putting the renewal of the resolution that we are in a declared state of emergency due to lack of housing on today's agenda. I have two suggestions that I have conveyed through Legal Assistant Lee. One, please do not prioritize types of citizens or housing on the resolution. And two, please include in the stated purpose of the renewed resolution an increase in the price of housing and a decrease in affordable rentals during the COVID virus pandemic. That would help to justify the implementation of certain measures to assist our citizens, including the expenditure of ARP funds for housing. Housing Development Specialist. Housing Coordinator Lehman stated that our biggest need is for a housing grant writer. Planning Director Crockett has recommended a housing project director to this BOC. I combined these two needs and others and came up with the idea recommending what I termed a housing development specialist for our county government, a contract to position for three years funded with American Rescue Plan funds. Duties would include writing housing grants, being the staff liaison to county housing committees, and overseeing housing development. Adam Briggs later Googled the job title I created and discovered that there is a housing specialist in Medford, Massachusetts. I recommend that Economic Development Coordinator Madison either define a county position for housing development specialist or housing grant writer, and that the county arrange for ARP funds to be set aside for that position. Comment number two. Housing Committees. After two years of waiting for a regional housing committee, I recommend that Regional Housing Committee Coordinator Mike Lehman give a presentation to this BOC giving specifics of what he and the interim Regional Housing Committee are doing and what the timetable is. And Commissioner Boyce, you are on that interim Regional Housing Committee. Given that Lehman will probably not continue beyond the end of the year, about the time that the regional committee starts, I think that we need to count on ourselves to develop housing at our county level. At this time, our biggest need is a committee of experts who can come up with solutions to overcoming barriers to housing development. Economic Development Coordinator Madison is recommending such a committee, informally facilitated by her as the staff liaison. Please just stand back and let her do this as quickly and simply as possible. She always comes through. I am nicknaming this housing committee, the Shovel in the Ground Committee. It would not need a BOC liaison, or given that Commissioner Boyce is liaising to the regional committee, perhaps Commissioner Herzog, who has a light touch, could be the BOC liaison? The current county housing committee of those who have been directly impacted by lack of housing offer important relevant experience and resulting perspectives to our housing development, and I thus recommend that that committee be transitioned to an advisory committee, to the new shovel-in-the-ground housing committee. The Directly Impacted Committee, has served for six months, has been undermined in several ways from doing their job and should not be disbanded because the county failed to provide suitable support. Please amend the housing committee ordinance accordingly and then support compliance of your ordinance. Thank you.
Mary, before you go to your next one, a quick question.
Oh, that's it? Those were the two?
Can you have a second?
Yeah, those were the two.
Those were the two?
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry. Can you do us a favor and tell us how to spell liaising?
Liaising?
Yeah, putting you on the spot just for fun, because I know you're...
Well, I hope that there's an I after the A.
Okay. Also, I wanted to just mention that it looks like I had the idea of, I've always had the grant writer slash COVID relief person coordinator on my radar for months and months. But you apparently had the idea on the housing development specialist.
Yes, what happened was Mike Lehman, I spoke to him, as you know, I had an appointment over here after your appointment with him a few weeks ago, and he said that the biggest need we have is for a housing grant writer because Neighbor Works Umpqua, which has been doing that kind of thing, is now only going to be finishing up the housing grants that they are writing. They are not going to be doing any more, so we are going to have to provide our own person. And so I also listened to Planning Director Crockett, and she recommended a housing project director, and I thought about, and we have a problem. We do not have a current acting staff liaison to the housing committee, the Directly Impacted Committee that I'm on. And it occurs to me that right now, we're in a, you know, we're in a state of two emergencies in this county. One is housing, and we have the ARP funds, and it's tied directly to the COVID...
You mean ARP?
I'm sorry, the housing crisis is, it has escalated because of the COVID, and so I think we could absolutely justify having a housing development specialist with some of those funds so that Summer Madison doesn't have to do everything. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. But obviously, we're lacking staff. We have, you know, we're a poor county. We don't have as many staff as we need, so, you know, it's, the money is to rescue people, and a housing development specialist is what I believe would be the most important thing. Oh, and I just want to say this, housing grants are very hard to write. I have an MSW. I know how to write grants. I know what a good grant proposal looks like. Housing grants are very hard to write, and that's why I'm recommending specifically a housing grant writer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle Martin, you're next?
Thank you. Commissioners, good morning.
You might want to pull the mics down a little bit.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, is that better? All right. On July 21st, a meeting, court stated best interest to the public regarding public parking. A decision was made to have public parking and upper side entrance to the planning department for 20-minute parking. This wasn't a unanimous decision on July 21st. This email was sent out on August 9th from Court, Boyce. Parking, what's best for the people we serve. Good morning. I am going to reclaim my parking spot where you presently park and make sure it is consistently accessible for the public and citizens' convenience. Not trying to quarrel with you, however, I'm going to take a stand on what shouldn't be even the slightest conflict or decision. It's a Commissioner's seniority matter, my spot, and you're welcome if you choose to move one spot south. Pash's rightful spot up to you. And Commissioner Herzog can then move one spot south where he should be anyways. I want to show a pattern of behavior that expresses court's character. Court continually harasses, intimidates other Commissioners, employees, Sheriff's Department with verbal threats and hundreds of emails that are threatening, harassing, and intimidating. The public does not see these emails. These emails show a bigger picture of court's behavior that presents behind the scenes. Court, you have superficial charm. You know how to manipulate audience, saying the right words and using the right lies, and you never own up to anything that you've done wrong, even when you're caught red-handed. You have always passed the blame on to someone else, and you feel that you have entitlement for special treatment. Example, your statement in your email, Commissioner, seniority matters, my spot. Where did you come up with seniority as a Commissioner? You have no seniority over Commissioner Herzog, Commissioner Pash, and you do not have seniority over your employees. You stated, "I'm going to reclaim my parking spot," really? Your parking spot, and then you're going to make sure it's consistently accessible for the public and citizens' convenience? You took a county car, you parked it in the middle of the white line, taking up two spots, two parking spots. How is that making it available to the citizens when you now have taken up two parking spots with a county car? And then after two or three days, you moved the car and parked your own vehicle there. This is about vengeance, this is about harassment, this is about intimidation and getting your way. Court, this is about people disagreeing with you. No one could use two of the three Commissioner's spots. When another Commissioner went to get the keys to move the car, you drove it across the street and sat in it, so he couldn't. Again, I'm showing behavioral pattern. You are not serving the public, you are unfit to serve our communities. Then you parked a personal truck in that spot, you claimed you wanted to keep it open for the public. You are callous, and you do not think about others' actions with your words and how they might affect people. You're constantly lying and using your lies to get what you want. You have a swollen self-worth, your superficial charm to manipulate audience, saying the right words, using the right lies. You do this continually at every meeting. You blame others when you're caught red-handed, and you've stated that you are above the law. You think you have entitlement being called seniority, Commissioner. This is no such entitlement, Court. You're making things up and harassing people every day. People come to work, and they worry about their jobs, they worry about their safety. Some people might think that this is petty, but it goes beyond petty. This shows a pattern of behavior that is dangerous, this shows a pattern of behavior that is narcissistic. This is just a pinch of what people are dealing with on a daily basis with you, Court. I'm asking, which I don't have to do now, I appreciate you stepping down as Chair, but I would continue to ask that you would resign. I have photos, if anybody, I'll be posting these on Facebook, by the way. This is the upper parking lot, which is empty most of the time, for the planning commissioner, where you can walk right in the door. This is the county car that was parked between the lines and a private vehicle. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for manning up and stepping down as Chair.
Can you submit those copies to those photos?
No.
Because I highly dispute that the car...
That's okay, photos speak for themselves.
Was barely touching the line, so you've said twice now that it blocked the both spots.
Okay.
Do you stand by that?
I do.
Okay, so you have a picture there.
I stand by others who witnessed it as well.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Nancy Sue Rose, please.
I'm Nancy Sue Rose. I live in Nasika Beach. Thank you for stepping down. Court, Boyce, I hope you look at all your actions moving forward. Not all the time you spend that you are always bragging about are Commissioner duties, and so I would like you from this time forward to look at everything you do and see if it's within your duties to be doing them, because then you brag that you're spending so much time for the county when a lot of it is out of your lines. And number two, last meeting, twice you said, "I never censored anyone," when you had just censored me just shortly, just several weeks before, on my statement that was made in a public comment back in the spring, I believe, that some of your heroes are criminals, which was proven true by, you know, many different ways. It was... are criminals, which was proven true by, you know, many different ways, it was proven true, and yet you had it removed from the public comments, which is illegal. I haven't been able to check if you removed it from the video as well, but doing illegal things, and then just lying about them and saying you never censored anybody, when you have, that's just one example, and I agree with everything that Michelle said. Thank you.
Gordon Clay.
For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. COVID report, in the last 14 days, Curry County has had 308 cases, almost three times the number of cases from the previous two-week period. That means almost 36% of COVID cases we've had in the last 18 months have happened in the last four weeks.
Gordon, excuse me.
As of yesterday, Curry County ranks number one.
Would you mind repeating that statistic, please?
Okay. Well, I've got it in a pack up here for you.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. As of yesterday, Curry County ranks number one of 36 counties in daily transmissions, ninth in the positive cases, and with the 14th lowest vaccination rate at 44.7% of citizens. Your resolution, let's be transparent as to the origin of the resolution approved at the last meeting. It's called a boilerplate model bill that was created and distributed months ago by a political action committee with false information as to the rights, as to constitutional rights. Exercising those rights must not endanger others, and in so doing violates their rights or the public welfare. The global pandemic justifies a wide range of reasonable restrictions on our liberties. Being otherwise makes the Constitution a suicide fact, and not just metaphorically, Supreme Court decisions therein. The Commission turned over the state of, to the state the responsibility of our mental and physical health, and then, in the middle of a major crisis, refused them to authorize to protect us. In item 7M of today's agenda, one Commissioner refused to ever permit mask mandates until the US government basically closes the southern border, an act that has little or nothing to do with the immediate health and safety of Curry citizens and our children, and you say it isn't political. Unfortunately, without constructive action to protect our youth, you can be, who can't be vaccinated, and adults who have been vaccinated, Delta, Delta Plus, and the new variants that they're finding, are finding ways around current vaccines, and they'll only continue to mutate. The Spanish flu killed 675,000 Americans, we've only got 52,000 people to go to beat that record, and that won't be a problem. County Council should revisit the legal ramifications of the mandate refusal, particularly when information could have appeared in the pilot before the start of the Pirates Festival, strongly encouraging masks and social distancing. Lollapalooza required masks which significantly reduced the spread of COVID. Unfortunately, our visitors may have unwillingly taken home more than they had planned. If I could afford it, I would file a lawsuit against the county Commissioners and county Council citing negligence and negligent homicide to stop this madness. I hope someone will. In the meantime, be wary of spreaders, because everyone vaccinated or unvaccinated is a potential spreader. Let's bring an end to the mutation process, wear a mask that covers your nose, and get vaccinated. Let's end this thing. Any questions? Here are the documents that support what I said, and given full data. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. No other public comments, no presentations, so on the consent agenda, we're going to go, oh, wait. I'm sorry, Connie. Please step up to the podium there. Yes, you're welcome to come up, my sincere apologies.
Well, of course, I made it back just in time for this, and I apologize for not making to some of my other obligations, and I was late getting home last night, so I didn't return a phone call. Anyway, I'm Connie Hunter, proud citizen of South Curry County, and I want to start off with something that's really important to me, and thanks to Summer Madison, we have this message to share right now. Dear veterans who served in Afghanistan, you kept terrorism at bay for 20 years, you served the bravery, you served with bravery and honor, you were there for those serving alongside you. What you did matters to us, sincerely, the American people. And I'm going to say sincerely anti-Connie, because if you see on my Facebook page, you'll see a picture of my nephew. At the time, he was stationed in Afghanistan as a technical sergeant. He returned to the United States and did set up a home in Oregon. Just so you know, I received from Veterans Services on Swak Koo's campus this message. With all the issues going on in Afghanistan and being highlighted in the news 24/7, the VA consolidated a number of resources for veterans who may need assistance in coping with the situation. And it's called Afghanistan, let's talk about it. Veterans from all eras are reacting to the events in Afghanistan, such as the US withdrawal and the takeover by the Taliban. You're not alone. Veterans may question the meaning of their service or whether it was worth the sacrifices they made. They may feel more moral distress about experiences they had during their service. It's normal to feel this way. Talk with your friends and families, reach out to battle buddies, connect with a peer-to-peer network, or sign up for mental health services. On the VA website, you can scroll down, and they have a whole bunch of information on where you can receive support, including the resources that are available right now, the Veterans Crisis Line. So if you are having thoughts of suicide, call 1-800-273-8255, then press 1, or you can visit online, veteranscrisisline.net. Common reactions, in reaction to current events in Afghanistan, veterans may feel frustrated, sad, helpless, grief, or distressed, feel angry or betrayed, experience an increase in mental health symptoms like PTSD or depression, sleep poorly, drink more and/or use more drugs, try to avoid all reminders of media, or shy away from social situations. Some veterans have more military and homecoming memories to rely on, but they may question the meaning of their service or whether it was worth the sacrifices they made. They may feel moral distress about experiences they had during their service. So, if you're not hearing from some veterans that are post-9/11, and I'm saying post-9/11 to include Afghan, Afghanistan veterans, because there's a prevalent thought that maybe it wasn't worth it all, and I'm just want to give this to the Commissioners, I'm sorry, I'm over my time, I'm so, apologize. VA, Portland is doing a research study on what veterans want in Douglas, Kooz, and Curry Counties, so that would be basically the Oregon counties that are a big part of our VA healthcare, Roseburg VA healthcare. So, they're trying to find out what our veterans want. So, make your voice heard, seeking veterans for a brief interview to help us learn about your community, you'll receive $50. But the goal is to hear veterans' thoughts on their communities to improve suicide prevention for veterans in Oregon. And so I'm going to hand this out to each of you here, and if you need any more information on this, please feel free to reach out to me at connie.hunter@outlook.com.
Connie, one second. We've been communicating with you, whoop, can't hear me, I'm sorry.
No, it's, I did my.
We've been communicating with you for our September 1st meeting, for a hyperbaric oxygen treatment deal, so you'll be here for that, and I wanted to let you know Mike Burns will also be here for the CT lung scan, an update for our veterans, thank you.
Thank you.
So, on the consent agenda, the only thing I wanted to add, Board, before we go down the list here, Counsel Pope, I'm on the newspaper services of record, and let's read a quick paragraph and make sure it's still pertinent and accurate. It is hereby ordered that the Curry County Reporter be designated as an additional newspaper record for Curry County, beginning July 1st, 2021, and continuing through June 30th, 2023, at the rate of $6 per column inch. Is that okay?
No.
Yeah, that's why I kind of, I think I caught that, so do you want to change that to 12?
No, we'd like to make an offer of, we would like to reduce by 25% for the county to nine, for the Curry County Reporter.
That's great.
Percent for the Reporter, reduce to six.
I can't imagine how your costs are going up. So, do you want to speak to that, or go to the microphone? And then Counsel Pope, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I think what's in the consent agenda is just the agreement we have between us and Curry Coastal Pilot, and they signed a stipulation to that, so we can make our negotiations and come up to numbers with him, but this is just for that paper, which, I believe you don't, you're not part of that paper, correct?
No, 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 not at all.
It says the Curry County Reporter be designated.
Oh, there must have been an error in the, it should be the Pilot, right, the Coastal Pilot.
Okay, so let's start over on this, stay there, stay there, please. Commissioner Pash?
As I recall, last year, we designated your paper, as well as the Pilot, as the paper of record, so I believe we had two papers of record and not one, is why I think there might be some confusion.
That's correct, I think there's actually three papers, too, with Mr. Hall, and then with them. We hadn't been able to communicate and get an agreement with him, so we were putting through this first one. It doesn't bar us from adding more papers of records, so it's just kind of pending our negotiations before we bring that to the Board.
I just didn't know if you were aware of that, so I just tried to give you information.
Board, what I'm going to request, we just bring this back on the first and get it all cleaned up. Not a big deal, we're glad to have you.
We've been treated wonderfully, and we enjoy serving the county, thank you, Mr. Pope.
Nobody does more for public service than you do, Mr. Hall. Commissioner Pash?
I'd like to move forward with getting this one here approved, and again.
Yeah, but it reads incorrectly.
No, I don't think so.
Well, yeah, you are right, you are right, you are right. Yeah, let's go ahead and.
There's no urgency on this, is there?
No, that's fine, yeah, we did make an error.
It would be more than one paper of record, so yeah, the language would change.
Let's just get it all fixed.
You're correct, Commissioner.
So, thank you again, Mr. Hall. Item 6B, minutes, business meeting, May 12th. 6C, minutes, business meeting, May 26th. 6D, minutes, special meeting, July 28th. 6E, signature, I'm yelling through my mask here. 6E, signature authority to Juvenile Director for Renewal Department of Education on behalf of Youth Development Division, Juvenile Crime Prevention Fund. Item 6F, amendment to master payroll fiscal year 2122. To add step CC, good. Item 6G, adopt position description for a new position, County Legal Council. 6H, reclassification of employee, Anthony Pope. 6I, designation to Curry Coastal Pilot, so we're going to postpone that. 6J, payment of AOCC dues, Association of Oregon and California Counties for fiscal year And 6K, use of maintenance work order form. Looking for a motion?
I'll move as amended.
Hold a second.
Further discussion? Call for the question?
Commissioner Pash?
Hi.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Discussion action, item 7A. I got to get back there. Curry County Proclamation, September National Suicide Awareness and Prevention.
We changed.
We kind of, we were going to talk about COVID prior to.
Okay, so we're going to go, that was originally.
M.
So, I got to go find that, guys. The circle's turning here. So, yeah, you heard me mention in my announcement that, very disheartening not to have an emergency meeting with what we were faced with last Friday. Kooz County had an emergency meeting, so has many of the other counties. Jackson, Josephine County, I mean, Assanti, they're treating people in hallways. The biggest aspect of that is, well, one of the biggest, people in Jackson County, if they need cancer treatments, they have a heart attack, a stroke, they may not be able to get into the hospital, it is so overran. Without laying blame or trying to speculate on how we got here, other than how we can learn from it and move forward, it's something, I'm just surprised that this Board didn't want to meet and at least talk for 30 minutes on possible things that we could be doing, should be doing. Do we want to do a mask mandate? Do we want to go back to where all the citizens come into our offices, we lock the doors, and we say, "We're still open, we're still serving," but we want to do phone and emails You know, I don't have a recommendation today unless the Board is willing to really take a serious look at this, and this could take some time today. I think we need to tell the citizens, through the entire medical establishment, that we're on the ball. I mean, I worked on this all weekend, learning everything I can, I talked to Public Health yesterday, twice, once for 35 minutes, Counsel Pope was on that call with me. The, I want to look at, I'd like the public to see this article that come out for executive, for goodness sakes. For Curry General Hospital, Executive Officer, Director Jenny Williams. Now, I'm not saying these pictures were taken at Curry General, they surely could have been. Lack of intensive care unit threatens critical patient care on this Delta surge. It's an excellent article, I'm going to ask JJ to put it on our county website, it was just three days ago. Sending patients to places like Boise, Reno, and San Francisco, and this Board didn't want to meet Monday and say, "Hey, what can we learn? How can we respond? Should we respond? How do we collectively protect the citizens and get the word out?" You know, I don't like wearing a mask any more than anyone else, I just don't want to get into constant debate whether it does any good or not, it's a respect for the people around you. Some people can't wear masks, but they can wear face shields, sure. I see a lot of our employees that are, you know, they're going above and beyond. So, again, I encourage anyone that can, and I didn't copy and paste these two articles, but these are the subheadings. Assanti Hospitals in Rogue Valley at maximum capacity, caregivers overwhelmed, worst conditions our hospitals have seen likely ever, said Public Health Director, that was for Three Rivers Hospital in Josephine County. Talk to the Commissioners over there. So this is just one article, and, let's see what this one is. No, sorry. Oh, this is from Peter Graven, I think is how you say his name. I was in on this call yesterday, and people think, okay, I'm not even going to respond. I just, I just make it my business to know and learn everything I can. Probably most everybody in this room has driven through, I-5 is right through here, this is looking west, Oregon Health Science University. This is just incredibly good statistics, and I feel bad for our people in Jackson, Josephine County, but they've taken a stand similar to what we have, and so you look up here to the metropolitan areas, they are taking very aggressive, they're much stronger on the vaccine than all of rural Oregon. I'm not, I've been so strong on personal choice there, and I will absolutely remain that way. We're. We're not spending enough time in our own immunities once, once some have had COVID. You know, the mask-wearing thing, back to that debate. Hopefully not. But what, what's the bottom line for Curry County? So, I'm going to go back down here to the eight primary points or nine. Stay home if it isn't very important to venture out. Group gatherings, commit to avoid larger groups. Vaccines, we completely understand. I'll speak for myself here. I completely understand vaccine hesitancy. Yes, it should be a guarded personal choice, but the risk from contacting COVID, studies show greater than vaccine risk. There's still a lot of discussion on that. Get tested. Simple as can be, the hygiene focus. We just, I know I certainly need to be reminded. The mask, those that wore it today, thank you very much. Social distancing. I will come in this morning and separate it out the chairs. I hope the commissioners don't have an issue with that. Back to where we were a year ago, or even 10 months ago. Be aware of the most vulnerable, vulnerable people that we care about. And you can add two, three more to this group of eight to remind the public. Let's see there. And the Board, you can interject any time, questions, you know, opinions, direction. I challenge you on that, encourage you on that. Okay, this is just all the studies on masks? I'm not saying I agree with these. I just, to me, it's not a hassle to wear a mask if it's somehow, even if it's 10%, you know, possibly lowering the risk. You know, it's just my opinion. It shouldn't, shouldn't even be discussed. And this is from ALC. This is an excellent, excellent article. It's highlighting all the hospitals that are overmaxed, the stress that's involved with that, and what it means to the citizens outside of the COVID pandemic issue. And I think I just have one more. Thank you, Board.
While you were getting to that?
Certainly, please.
So, I've been thinking about this a lot since, you know, we had a meeting and that mandate that came out on Friday the 13th. And my whole deal is the freedom and right to do what I feel is, is right for me. And, but I would say that as a public official, a county commissioner, if, if the folks in this room, there's four public folks here, citizens, that I would not be a stumbling block. If, if you folks, the majority of you said, John, I'd feel better if you wore a mask, I have no problem with that. But it would have to be a majority. And I, and if it's, I don't know how, if it's okay to poll the, poll them or what? Anthony's shaking his head yes, but I don't want to be a stumbling block to anybody, but I, I feel it is, it's, it's a, it's a personal choice. If, if I feel like Anthony's going to get a sunburn, I don't put on sunscreen to protect Anthony. So, Mary Sue?
Why don't we wait until we're done here?
It's actually Nancy Sue Rose. Nancy Sue Mary Rose. So, I've got four first names. It's very difficult.
Okay.
Ms. Rose, would you mind waiting until we're, we're done here? We'll definitely call on you, okay? Thank you very much. So, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I, you know, I, I would ask the Board, if that's a, if that's a fair ask to, to ask the public.
Be real specific, if you can, Commissioner, on what you're proposing.
If, if the four public members of this meeting would, would like me to wear a mask, I would.
Well, a mask or face shield would, would send the right message, I think. Boy, it's tough for me to, to push anyone. I would encourage you. But I don't know if I could vote to... I don't know what your health history is, you know?
Well, I've had COVID.
It's none of my business.
So, I, I'm not, I'm not going to take a vaccine, so...
Well, let's come back to that. There might be something else here that can help you in your decision or the Board here in general. Just a letter I got from a registered nurse. Said some pretty positive things about me personally, so I'm going to forego that. But I don't know how accurate it is. Forgive me here. Dear Commissioner Boyce, I've never written to you directly, but I feel the current situation that we are all facing warrants it. I refrain from writing you often in the hopes that my words will now carry some weight. This is what is really happening in your county right now. I am a frontline person working with St. Tim's and OHA, and I see exactly what is, what is unfolding before us. Our vaccination rates are very low in this county, and we are seeing an avalanche of SARS, COVID-2, and C-19, people testing positive. The majority of these people are symptomatic. We did over 100 tests a day with a po... This was two days ago, by the way, with a positive rate of 25 to 28% because the Delta, because of the Delta variant. Excuse me. The numbers are not jumping because we are testing more. In fact, just the opposite. But I want to come back here real quick to the Gordon Clay numbers of 300 in, what was it, 20 days? I meant to have him repeat that one more time, and I did, I think I wrote it down correctly, but didn't quite catch it. It is because this Delta, and I'm writing word for word here, reading, is very highly contagious. If you are unvaccinated, do not follow all the precautions and plan on getting Delta. And believe me, this is not just the flu, not even close. Court, now, I talk to you dad to dad. I have seen a lot of very sick babies, and I mean under 1 years old. Sick enough for the hospital, maybe, maybe not, but sick. Seeing this virus jump the ages is very scary and what I feared most. We have scared, worried parents that need services, and the first step is knowing, is this COVID? Many times it is. We have a daycare in your county that was hit hard, and sick kids are here. As a dad, it hurts to watch parents cry with the news, let alone what may be in their future for their child, for them. These are children that cannot get vaccinated, so I ask you, how do we protect them? I implore you and the Board to please think as a dad and not go against any mandates that OHA and the state put in place. If you think that the county cannot afford to close down, then manage that risk. That's a pretty good, that's a pretty insightful comment. Parents will blame someone, let it not be the county. I'm available anytime to talk, and all of you are more than welcome to spend the day with me on Jason Street at St. Tim's to soften your hearts, but it will be the whole day if you are brave enough. It is a serious lesson in humility and humanity. I'm afraid I have no objective but to ease suffering and prevent death. With great respect, and I'll leave the name out. So, why wear a mask? The studies, I think, go both ways. What kind of masks are acceptable? And then, I mentioned a minute ago, anybody want to interject here real quick? I've got one more letter, and then I'm done, at least for now. So, this is to, this was written, what, two days ago, Sunday, whatever. Dear Curry citizens, I would like to express continued support and appreciation to Curry General, Curry Medical Center, Coast Community Health, and St. Timothy's, all of their staffs and all volunteers. For the incredible job they have done in creating, excuse me, caring, I'm going to have to go a little bigger on this. Glasses aren't quite that good. In caring for the medical needs of our county during this intense healthcare COVID crisis. Curry General is the main hospital hub for Curry County and has been heavily impacted. It continues to be heavily affected by the latest surge of the, of our local coronavirus, Delta cases. I'm asking our community for continued patience, understanding, and cooperation as they work hard to manage resources, patient care, and accessible, accessibility to medical services. We encourage everyone to join us in supporting their efforts and in working together so we can prevent any additional unnecessary interruptions to the medical needs of our community in the coming days and weeks ahead. From Curry citizen volunteer Connie Hunter, in all of this risk management and liability mitigation that we have to do individually and collectively with regards to the Delta phase of this pandemic, let's not forget the valor of our frontline workers, especially our educators, first responders, service providers across the social services sector, including healthcare and mental healthcare workers, who are risking their lives while gearing up mentally, once again, to fight the tsunami of cases that the newest numbers suggest, that we must anticipate, whether we like it or not. So, back to this letter I wrote just a moment ago from the nurse. These are the frontline heroes. These are the people that are very knowledgeable, even if they've just been a nurse for a short time or a doctor, healthcare provider. We need to listen to them. And yeah, when it, when it starts, this strain goes to the kids, that should get our attention. It surely has got mine. Commissioner Herzog?
Well, all three of us received an email today from a healthcare worker that said, thank you, that you are making it a choice. Thank you, that you, you know, you sent a resolution out. And, and so, this is, this is a healthcare worker in, in, at the hospital here in town that says...
Forty-year nurse.
It's, 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 it's your right to... And that, that's the freedom my dad fought for in Korea. That's the freedom that Chris fought for in the Marines. I don't know about David's dad, if he probably wanted to... But that, I know, I know Matt's dad was. Right? So, that's the freedom that they fought and died for, a lot of them. And, and, but I, but, but again, I just go back to... I don't want to be a stumbling block to somebody, and I, and, and I would, I would ask that the... If people are, are afraid for, because I'm not wearing a mask, I would wear a mask. The public.
Commissioner Pash?
I don't think so.
So, Commissioner Herzog, excuse me, the, the nurse that you referenced only had one issue, unless I interpreted incorrectly, and that was mandatory vaccines. You see a story in New York right now where the healthcare providers, providers, the people most in the know, there's about 25 to 30% saying, no, we're not going to get the vaccine. I don't recall this Board, ever, nor have I suggested any mandatory vaccines, any mandatory passports. I have promoted that the vaccine is important. That's where I've stopped, though. I haven't heard a commitment from the members of this Board similar to that stand or that position. So, the nurse was very concerned that the county pushed back on any potential mandatory vaccines. So, that was my understanding. If I had misunderstood...
No, I think that's, that's...
That's fair? Okay. So, as far as a mask goes, I mean, that's just one thing you can do. You know, it's inconvenient, and it's, you know, I appreciate that the Board is allowing, or, excuse me, appears to be supportive of having this time, taking this time. But I'm going to ask, if I call for emergency meeting again and request that of this Board through County Council Pope slash BAC Office Manager, instead of saying no, you at least say maybe? Or how soon can we get there? Because it is important, and I, I don't want to be in that position again. This is, this is not a fun part of our job. It's not something we can turn our back on or even be complacent on. 300 in some cases. I just don't, you know... Hopefully, our kids, and I suspect this what's going on, it'll just boost their immune system. Thank God that, I would be very much against shots for children vehemently. I have nine grandkids. And our job is to protect all the kids. But hopefully, it will be just a system that just, you know, in a long-term basis will improve their immune system. But we don't know what's coming down the pike next. What's the next variants? There's people out there even think, yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Pash.
I was just wondering, what is the current age limit on vaccine? Is it nine years old, I think?
It depends on where you are, I think.
My issue is, I mean, I'm, I'm getting emails from people saying that they've got vaccines that are about to expire, and they need to use them or throw them away. I mean, why doesn't the state, our governor, lift the, lift the age restrictions, supersede that age restriction, and let those vaccines be used for children that their parents want that for their kids or the kids want that, rather than letting those vaccines expire? But that's, that's something, a way to address some of the issues that some people have.
Well, I mean, the stuff you read... I don't know if you want to go into a vaccine discussion. I don't, I've read a lot of stuff, but I'm highly uninformed in the, in the overall aspect. I mean, where's the Food and Drug Administration? Where's the Center for Disease Control? Where's the International Health Organization? There's, we don't know enough, in my view, to recommend it.
I'm not saying...
Good, that's why I'm...
Well, what I'm saying is, anyone that wants to have a vaccine should be allowed to get a vaccine. If you want one, you should be allowed to get one. If you don't want one, you shouldn't be made to take one. And that's, that's what I believe.
And I think we're in agreement on that?
Well, yeah, I think as a youngster, I didn't, I didn't have any say in getting vaccinated for polio and chicken pox and TB and all that stuff. My, my parents made that decision, and I think, I think parents have a right to make a decision for underage. Well, we could get into a whole myriad of stuff there with kids and...
Yeah. You see, now, you're all on time for a break.
Thank you.
And I would vote for that break, because, that coffee, anyway.
So, does the Board want to do anything collectively now? Do you want to just end the discussion? Do you want to take any kind of action? What, what is the message you want to send or not send to the public, to the citizens?
The message I'd like to send to the citizens is, if you feel you need to or want to be vaccinated, go get vaccinated. If you feel you need to wear a mask, wear a mask. Stay safe. That's my message.
That's pretty much my message. I would ask that Nancy Sue Rose be able to...
Excuse me? Yes.
Comment and-
Please come up.
Connie wants to come in.
Nancy Sue Rose, um, you asked a specific question. No, it doesn't bother me that you don't wear a mask. I wear, I don't wear a mask because I can't wear plastics. I don't wear polyester clothing. I don't wear plastics. I try to limit my exposure to plastics. Um, and so that's why I use this. Which does satisfy the law at this time, and I do follow the mandate. I wear this when I go into businesses because I do not want the businesses to be fined for this. But if someone is not wearing a mask, you know, that is fine with me, too. And I, I also wish people would remember that early on, this board had a doctor come on and talk about the immune system and how important our individual immune system is. Because viruses are in the air, they're on us, they're in us at all times. And what our immune system, um, the status of our own immune system is what is very important, and we do have control over that. Each individual has control over-
Okay, so I'm, thank you. I'm, I'm hearing the board say, "No action today." Yeah, hang on one second, Mr. Clay. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I think, I think Connie had a-
Excuse me, Connie, I'm sorry, you were next. That's twice I overlooked you today. And then Gordon will come to you, but we're running up against a break here.
I got a text, um, from Lauren Farmer, and he said to thank you for reading that letter. Because I let him know that you read an excerpt from his letter. And he wanted to let everybody know that they're giving vaccinations and tests at State Ten, so stop by if you like. The reason that I'm wanting to speak to this has to do with, um, messaging. I think it's important. You know where I stand with regards to personal rights and even states' rights. I'm a little different compared to most liberals. I would say I'm the most conservative liberal you're ever going to run into and the most liberal-conservative you're ever going to run into. So I'm trying to walk that balance between what's good, bad, and, and ugly. And one thing that I know is I had to count heads. I lost twelve people to COVID. And I just got information from another one of our veterans' task groups, and he asked me if I had our pulse oximeter that was brought to me when I had COVID by Lauren Farmer, Nurse Lauren Farmer. And I said, "No," I had loaned it out, but his, uh, church group, uh, four people have come down with COVID and, uh, they lost a parishioner. So, we have to tell the hard stories along with, you know, and I said this in an email to you, we all live in that two-sided coin of freedom and responsibility. And I really admire two things about this board, is understanding responsibility, okay? And being right, wrong, or indifferent, taking a stand. Now, the stand that you've taken is personal freedom. I'm all down with that. Now let's mitigate some of that liability and some of the other piece of it, which is just your risk. And get those statements out there that, um, these are the numbers. This variant is stronger. It causes more severe disease, disease in general. It's reaching a younger population, um, with more severe disease. Let's just be truth-telling. If we're going to lay it out there on the freedom side of things, let's put it out there on the responsibility side of things. And I really appreciated the good information that came forward. All I know is we are blessed to be here. Love thy neighbor as thyself, and from the get-go, you saw me walk in with a mask. And I remember the best compliment, two compliments I ever, ever had in, in, in this meeting was, I had Commissioner Pash say I looked like a ninja. And I felt like a ninja that day because I knew I was looking out for all of you, everybody, and that's my job. And so we have to put that back in, in perspective. And the other thing was, I even said to Sue Gold, "We may not see eye to eye on this, but I know we see heart to heart." And she said, "Well, I can't even see your eyes." Okay, that was the funniest thing. I am so blessed to be in a free country, in a county that represents freedom. But I also know that if I don't walk around with some understanding of what my responsibilities are and communicate what those responsibilities are, I haven't done my part. So if you get a list that says, "This is where your vaccinations and your, your tests are happening," I put that together because Public Health didn't put it together, no one else put it together. But if we're going to have that risk, let's get the information out there. Yes, go and get that vaccination, but where? Go and get that test, but where? So let's keep that good information flowing, uh, from all sides. And that's my biggest concern, is that people get the straight scoop, know the public policy stance of this board, and act accordingly to manage that risk and, and liability in association with that. Thank you for letting me speak about this. It's very important. Probably one of the most important things you guys will ever have to do in your lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Gordon, quickly, please.
First of all, I want to answer, uh, your question, Pash, and that is that it's illegal to inject that, uh, any of the vaccines into anybody under eleven or under twelve.
I thought it was eleven, ten or eleven.
No, you, you can get vaccinated, twelve-year-olds can get vaccinated. And they, they've got research right now that looks like it'll come out shortly to take it down to seven. But it is illegal to insert. The other thing is, I really encourage you to get your, uh, county council on the legal path. Because the Supreme Court has allowed requirements for masks. They were, in Oregon, you've got to, I mean, uh, yeah, mandates for masks and actually vaccines. Because if anybody wants to have a kid in school, head start or anything else in Oregon, they've got to have seven vaccines. It's the law, and you can't, you can pull your kid out of school. There is a, uh, the religious option, but, uh, anyway, and part of it for me is that my granddaughter and my niece had been vaccinated fully, and they both got COVID in the last month. And it, it's impacting and it's killing infants. So you can play with your breath all you want, but, uh, you're in legal risk. And one of the papers that I gave you is an article that listed a number of different Supreme Court decisions. And you, they have, oh, and the other piece is, I don't understand. Last week or two weeks ago, you read a letter from, I think it was Douglas County, that, uh, said, "Trust your mental health and rely on them," I mean, your, uh, physical health, and rely on them for recommendations. Yet you are, you've assigned OHA to be your physical and mental health, and you're not relying on their recommendations. You're giving them the responsibility, but not the authority. And that just blows my mind. It's, it's good for Douglas County, but it's not good for Curry County. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, parole officer, probation parole officer Denny, would you, would you like to go now, or do you want to come back after break? So why don't we do it now? Oh, we're fine. Everybody, oh, you needed a break. Excuse me. I was trying to take advantage of-
I do need a break. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Be back here at, uh, ten twenty-five, please. So we're going to do the, uh, the Colvin Building first. Okay. Welcome back, everyone. Uh, Curry County, Oregon Board of Commissioners. It is August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Resuming after recess, we have on agenda items seven H and L combined, the Colvin Building. Welcome, and welcome back, Council Pope. We have Juvenile Director Wendy Lang, Curry County. Thanks for, uh, being here. Yep? I and L. Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'll start with I here, the Juvenile Department.
Take your mask off if you like.
Thank you very much for letting me, um, present today. Um, things kind of happened fast. I'd met with, uh, my liaison Commissioner Herzog last week and just questioned him. I'd walked by the Colvin Building several times and just asked if there was a current plan. And when he said no, um, I thought maybe I would use this as an opportunity to hopefully benefit the county and the Juvenile Department. I would, um, I'm seeking permission today to turn it into a juvenile justice building. Several of the juvenile departments in the county, you'll notice, are not in the courthouse. They have a building separate from that. About two years ago, the Juvenile Department kind of took one for the team when the District Attorney's Office needed more space. And so we swapped space with the, um, DA's office to give them more room. Hindsight, probably wasn't a real good move for me as it was a lot smaller location. So since that move, just some things that we're having difficulties with is confidentiality in our office. So if there's a youth in our office, I can't even be on the phone because you can hear everything in our office. We literally have a piece of blue painting tape on the floor where we try to keep kids on one side, confidential records on the other. Youth cannot be held in an adult jail, so when we're transporting youth or we detain a youth, they have to be held in our office. And that is at our desk, at a table. There's no confidential, it's not secure, it's just kind of there. That kind of becomes an issue. My community service director literally has a three-foot by three-foot desk in the office, Admin's Office, because we just don't have space for that either. We are hoping to, the contract with the state for us to get ADPEP, the Tobacco and Drug and Alcohol Prevention Program, provides a full-time employee with the county that the state pays for. I have nowhere to put them. I'm just waiting to receive the contract. That was kind of part of the public health, that they've agreed to get back to the Juvenile Department. So it would be nice to have them in with us. We have no place for skill groups, drug and alcohol classes. Uh, we do a lot of the work in our car. It wasn't too long ago where I sat in my vehicle outside with the youth in the backseat and dispatch checked on me periodically because we just didn't have a secure place to keep the youth. Yeah, it was, we were upstairs, but I needed a place where they couldn't knock things off my desk or tip over chairs. I just needed a quiet space for them to be. We don't have any storage. If we do UAs for youth right now, we, for lack of better terms, kind of have to parade them down a public hall, which is right outside of a courtroom. We have to bring them up two sets of stairs. We have a small break room. Our employees work crazy hours, so there's, sometimes we don't get lunch breaks, sometimes we're there night. And we, we actually process our UAs on our break table in one tiny little closet. It's disgusting, but that's really all we have. And, and I, I could go on for a long time about just our needs, but that's what's happened in the last two years where I realized we probably should not have given up space. I toured the Colvin Building with Commissioner Herzog. I've taken my staff over there. I believe this is an opportunity for the Juvenile Department to go in and make it a full center with little or no cost at all to either fake, uh, facilities and maintenance or the county. We have staff, we have community service work, we have Commissioner Herzog, who said he can roll up his sleeves and help out a little bit. Community Service has both adult and youth. The supplies are over there. We went through stuff. And if there is minor things, we're looking at it like a window, maybe some sheets of drywall and a little bit of flooring when you walk in, and that's definitely things that I could cover out of my budget. So to allow us to move over there, offer a service to the youth in our county, we then are going to free up the top floor for the DA's office, whose basement and top floor. I messaged, um, DA Spansale, who's at a conference. He's very interested in being able to get everything on one floor, to do services a lot better. And then we now have office space down below, and I know the county's been looking at office space options to be able to expand. The Juvenile Department, as with ADPEP, also has the ability to maybe expand services, maybe bring in our other services, which means, um, I'm taking less money from the general fund. When I do ADPEP, that's twelve thousand dollars. My budget's not pulling from the fund because I, I get those, sort of the, the dollars for that. So I can't think, I'm probably a little one-sided. This all happened quick. I think it's a fantastic idea. I can't see a downside to it. For us, the big thing was, I don't want to come in here and ask the county or facilities and maintenance, who are already overworked, to have to take on this project, this idea I had. So I don't think that's, I don't think that's an issue. We'd probably need some help completing the walls, three walls, um, that have already been started, but the supplies are there. And, um, that's kind of what I'm asking today. I would love to get a go-ahead to move forward. Once school starts, our department is crazy, crazy busy. I mean, we'd like, we'd like the okay and to get busy tomorrow.
Terrific presentation. Uh, Commissioner Herzog?
I'm in favor of it. Wendy, uh, has just done a fantastic job. And, and she did take one for the team. I wasn't here, but, uh, you can just tell. If you, if you visited the courthouse, she, they are jammed in there. It would free up space because Josh needs, uh, DA Spansel also needs, um, storage, and so he, you know, that's kind of how this started. Well, he was going to move stuff over there in store, and he wouldn't have to now. It'd be in the same building and, I think it's a, I think it's a use for that building that would be fantastic, so.
Mr. Pash?
I agree. Um, you know, I think we need to use what buildings we have and have their best use. So, uh, a lot of what you said with parading juveniles and that, for me, is important because I know that their privacy is, is, it's imperative to protect those kids. So that's a lot of it for me. My question or concern would be the work that still needs to be done over there. Just looking at a, from a legal aspect, um, I appreciate everyone wanting to get together and do some work, but any load-bearing or any walls that, and if, if there, if there's still a wall that needs to be built or any electric or anything like that, um, I think to protect the county on that, we may want to have a contractor come in and build that wall and sheet it. And once it's sheeted, you can do whatever you want to do with it, but, or any electric or plumbing. I, I think to protect yourself and the county-
Absolutely.
To have that done by a licensed contractor, I'd be a hundred percent in support. Would there be some room that you could identify to still store some files? Because I know there's, uh, a huge concern from the Sheriff's Department, from the DA's office, and I believe from your office, to have some secure file storage.
Yeah, we've already taken place for our secure file storage, um, and there's a couple rooms in the back that aren't earmarked anything. And, and certainly short-term. Of course, our long-term goal, um, because Commissioner Herzog had said that to me, and I said, "No." Only because I see, I see potential, uh, we're going to get ready to talk about maybe bringing drug and alcohol counselors in and expanding, and I just see those office, their offices. They're, the back of that, there is very little work that needs to be done. Those offices are ready for us to find resources and put people in, but absolutely, team player, if there's something that needs to be done. And we haven't been in all of them. I think the state needs to get stuff out. And I think the good news is, um, when I talk about walls, it's an outside wall that's already there. I don't know the contract term, but they already have metal and they're just bringing it in two inches and re-sheet rocking it. So to my knowledge, there won't be no new walls, no electric. It's kind of finish work, is what I see. But absolutely, I would, I would agree with that. I don't want to do anything.
And one more thing I noticed, uh, your, your excitement with expanding, which I agree with as well. I just want to remind you that we are looking at a new courthouse and all that as well, and making sure that the architects are aware of future expansion for your department so that they can kind of plan that into the future of the new courthouse and, and the new facility that we're looking to build.
And they did, um, Ms. Melzer had brought them up originally, and just about everything on our checkoff list, I think, is here without making changes. Like I said, I, I think it's just, I think it's, I think it's super minor. I think it's me and my staff coming out on some weekends and doing some painting, putting some trim up, asking for some help from community service. I'm thinking positive. I'm sure, I'm sure something will pop up, but I, I see it as a win-win for all of us.
Good job.
So I have a couple things. Uh, yeah, where you are right now, where District Attorney Dial used to be, I don't know how you all are squeezed in there. I mean, that, that is amazing to me. I would be, initially, I would be opposed to have an additional storage from other departments there because I think that room would be opened up with just the, uh, the, the movement that's going on here. So I, I wouldn't put that under, uh, under the roof right now, um, without quite a bit of discussion. The, the other thing is, um, you said, you mentioned your budget, that some of this could come out of your budget. I really, uh, want to, uh, highlight a little bit what Commissioner Pash said. I think we need two, two contractors to come in and bid that job, at least to know, and pay them, you know, because their time is so valuable. But if, if they come in with a small bid and agree with you, what we've observed, that it's essentially finish work. Yeah, I, I took some pictures. I'm not quite convinced of that, you know, because there's some serious door issues and, uh, you know, thank goodness, that's a pretty stout building with the amount of concrete center blocks that are in there. But I would want a cost estimate, at least first from your office, uh, maybe from facilities and maintenance combined with your program. And the other question I had, uh, I mean, anyway, before we proceed, I want to know what the cost is going to be. Because we, for all I know, all the materials are there. Doesn't look like it to me, but, you know, I didn't look that close. And then the last thing, uh, had one employee mention, was enthused about the project, and said, "Wait a minute, what if we had a couple of, uh, you know, transitional houses there for deputies when we can't find a home when they're hired here?" Or, you know, youth that you'd need to house now. I know that gets into a whole bunch of state requirements and legal aspects, but, wow, in the interest of the shortage of housing, is there two rooms that you could open up? And then I realize you'd probably need a chaperone at some, some point. You've got all of them.
I don't know how, I don't know how that would happen. That's, I've not even thought about. I mean, I think when we did our layout and actually, there is, um-
You, you've pretty much had every room-
Yeah, I don't know if you guys, if you passed on the map or, okay, yeah. It, in, 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 we would use it for community service work. Um, there'd be a back room for community service work. You know, we have times where we stay overnight with youth, uh, out of state runaways. They need a place to sleep, and it's on the floor by my desk, or it's sitting in the backseat of a car. So I think a lot of it would be utilized, like I said, that way. We have no secure place. We have no place for attorneys to even meet with youth right now. So I think we're talking, there would be like four offices that are completely done right now, and they're nice offices.
But we're not ready to go twenty-four-seven at all.
I, no, absolutely, no way. No, no, no. And that's only when we have to. That's only when we detain a youth. We have no choice. When you detain any sort of runaway, they are ours until we either place them home. Like if we get a Oregon runaway, if it's a runaway from anywhere in the state of Oregon, they don't go to detention. We hold them until we can get them home. And so if we have parents from Salem, or if we have parents that are working and don't get off, we sit with that youth until that happens. Or we go on the road and meet two ways. So there's times where, you know, if PD picks up a runaway at two in the morning, my staff and I are sitting in the office with them. They're not criminals, if they're not locked up, they're not detained. We just have to make sure they're safe and secure until we can get them home, so.
So board, anything else?
No, sir.
Uh, so in order, so we have a direction here and a path. We want to know what it's going to cost to finish those rooms. So, in order, so we have a direction here and a path, we want to know what it's gonna cost to finish those rooms. And don't go lean, because we don't want to move you in and then have a few jobs, you know, I'm sure you've already thought of this, I don't mean to... I'm a builder too, and used to be a contractor, but that's, as you stated, that looks pretty doable over there, and it's, I think there's a lot of enthusiasm for what this could mean. So, cost involved, where the money's gonna come from, and then timeframe, what you're looking at? Are you looking at two weeks, six months? You know, you don't have to answer today, but just come back to the Board. And what else would we want to include in that list, gentlemen?
I think just get with Chet, Wendy and I get with Chet, we go through it. Chet, what's this gonna cost, I think that's just a couple hours, we can figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, and when our department looked at it, I look at it, about $1,000 of supplies. I mean, it's, it's there, if you look at most of the supplies, the door frame, the doors are all there. The two-by-sixes are sitting in the pile, the drywall is in a pile, all the metal to put up the walls is in a pile. To our knowledge, it was one window, we might need a couple extra sheets of drywall to go on one of the ceilings and flooring when you walk in. Those were the three things that we, and like I said, it's the only wall that would even need attention, it's a two-foot section on top of a wall that already exists, just to make it confidential, it's pretty minimal.
Yeah, I'm also, I'm also concerned, though, with having a licensed contractor come in, and that's not to say that somebody else can't do it, that we have in-house, but I think it's, I'm just in agreement that that's probably pretty important in this case. Commissioner Pash?
I'm, I'm not sure that we need a licensed contractor to come in and, and make sure the building is safe for you to move into it, I think our maintenance staff can do that. All I was saying is, if there is, you do find something that you feel, you know, that's electrical or plumbing or something that should be done by a licensed person, that it gets done that way, and not somebody just do it. So, I don't think, you know, having a contractor come in and walk through the building should preclude you moving forward to move in there.
I don't either, I think Chet, the three of us can figure that out and, and give, you know, come up with a number pretty...
The cost basis.
And identify any issues, yeah.
Yeah, because he doesn't want anybody to work irresponsibly and just, you know, yeah, so, I think we're good.
Okay, so we have a direction here, thank you very much.
We're approved to move forward, do a walkthrough with...
I'll make a motion that we approve juvenile moving over to the Colvin Building with the...
After all, the completion is done?
Well, after, after, you know, looking through it and just seeing what, and just getting the list and getting it back to you guys, and just moving forward.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna back up just a little bit, if I may, did you want to second that?
I'll second it, yeah.
The reason I want to back up is because we're hearing that Facilities Maintenance is, is over, you know, overtaxed right now. Your motion didn't include a cost, which I thought we agreed on, a predetermined, you know, it's $1,000 or $10,000, whatever it is, I think we need to include that in your motion, that's just my opinion.
That's fine, yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out, and...
Okay, so everybody understands the motion?
Yep.
Further discussion? Call for the question, please.
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next subject for you?
Thank you, yeah.
The next one is Lipsec, and I, I brought this to the Board, because we've had it, we had a meeting last week, and, you know, Lipsec is a critical part of our county's infrastructure, and it deals a lot with good health. And some of our Board members from Lipsec would like to discuss the current state of services in the county and the agencies. And they would also like to talk about a critical walk-in center here, and some of the shortfalls with behavioral health. So, I welcome our Chair Lieutenant Denny and Wendy Lang from Juvenile to discuss some of the things, and some great information this morning, Wendy, on your work on that.
Yeah.
Director Lang, you get to go first, I think.
Perfect, and we've been, Dave and I have been meeting quite a bit together. So, we had a Lipsec meeting, and we were all kind of talking, it was getting, getting kind of frustrating, there's a lot of changes going on with behavioral health, when things changed in June, and, and nobody, it kind of was going day-to-day by, for a while, but when we would meet, Dave and I really didn't know the answers, we didn't know what changes were taking place, or where the service was, or when it changed, which we felt we really needed to know in order to pass on to our clients. And so, that's what we were just trying to figure out, is how do we make sure, you know, we're pretty passionate about making sure not only our clients, but Curry County gets good behavioral health. We want to make sure that we get them the best services that we can. So, in the last week, we've been talking to everybody we could talk to, from state to local to providers, feeling like we understand the behavioral health piece a little bit, understanding that hopefully, we have a contract that's gonna be changing things up a little bit. And so, really, the big piece that we took out of it is, we would love to maybe be a part of that discussion as it moves forward, so we can make sure with behavioral health changes, that, that we all know, so we can pass on to our clients. I mean, if I don't know who's gonna be the crisis worker, or where that crisis building is, it's really hard for our clients to get there. And it sounds like that's part of the process moving forward, is that maybe after a contract is signed, that that, that help, that, that would, that would also take place. But we would love to be part of that process, and kind of know, we're a little on edge. We, you know, first of all, it's the end of June, and then it's the end of September, and maybe it's the end of December, but in the meantime, where, what do we tell our POs to tell our people? So, I think good things are coming, it sounds like we're gonna have more services than we've had in the past. Sounds like we're super thankful that CCH has agreed to, you know, stay on, or we would have nothing. So, definitely not a complaint, just, I think we really want to ask that maybe we really be included in the future of just knowing if there's any changes, or if we're entering into something, and maybe when would that be? So, we can then make sure that, you know, the clients, the people in Gold Beach, know where there's, know where those services are. And then Phase Two of that was, in Lipsec for about a year and a half now, we have been dreaming that wouldn't it be nice if Curry County had its own drug and alcohol counselor? It would be, the turnover seems to be large, always has been, and we have a lot of need for that. It was, what if we could actually employ somebody that did all the juvenile, all the assessments, all the treatment, all the education, all the adults? And also could do groups for those who are incarcerated in our jail, but they worked for us. And it sounds like Mr. Herzog is kind of, I take that back, Commissioner Pash, took that from our meeting, passed it on, Mr. Herzog has followed up with that. And it sounds like it's something we could apply for, that we could apply for our CCOs, and just see if there's funding. Other counties have done that, and had those services, to where we don't have to wait for an assessment. We can do not just once-a-week check-ins, we can, you know, provide better services, and right under our, right under our umbrella, and it's something that, like, the Juvenile Department could apply for it. They would be a Juvenile Department employee. So, we were just kind of, you know, seeing what the Board thought about maybe us taking the next step and sending something to the CCOs to see what their thought is. Again, it wouldn't cost the County any additional funds, it would be covered through a grants that we would apply for, some matching funds.
Mr. Denny, you're next, and then we'll keep this discussion going.
No, I'm gonna kind of mirror what she said, we've been talking about this a long time, and, and it's no fault of Curry Community Health and all the changes being made, but we just need answers and be on the same page, because it changes so quickly, and we don't know. Because we, I've got, you know, POs referring people for assessments and treatment, and they go there, and then things change. And so, like I said, I'm not pointing fingers, we're not pointing fingers at anybody, we're just looking for answers and a way to move forward and, and not look back. So, I think, make things a lot better than what they are right now. And Wendy's done an enormous amount of work in the past couple of weeks since our meeting. And she's made a lot of good contacts and has a lot of good information, and I think she forwarded that to Mr. Pash, and maybe he can share that.
I'll share it with both of you. So, will you two officially, I'm gonna even say, hopefully be representing Local Public Safety Coordinating Council? I mean, on, if we could get you, per your request, you two would be the go-to people for that council?
Absolutely.
Fantastic, so here's, here's why I ask that. I think you probably know, and I put it up on the screen today, because I've been working behind the scenes on this, Oregon has a half a billion, over 500 million, that we have positioned ourselves to compete for, with all the other counties, strictly identified, allocated to mental and behavioral health. So, we're with David Rocksmith, you know, I'm gonna reference him, because he's always, he's always on the ball. And that's the first time I heard of it, now two months ago, we went to the CCOs. We went to CEO Razzle Williams, excuse me, of Curry General Hospital, and we're working on a plan, certainly Linda Maxson from Coast Community Health. We could really use your help with that plan. So, to involve you in those discussions, those conversations, that is definitely the next step. And you can help us even better prepare for and compete for those funds. And I think we already have a good leg up, this meeting today, or this presentation that you're doing, is very helpful. And, yeah, we would love to have you involved, get in, get you in that next step. So, yeah, I'll look at everything you've got, and forward that to David Rocksmith and the other people that are involved, and who we're working with at Oregon Health Authority that will be essentially administering the money.
And are we, are we accurate in saying we're somewhat close in a new contract for behavioral health? Is that...
You mean with ADAPT? I don't know how close we are, I, go ahead and report a few notes.
Well, I, last time I talked to Gregory Brigham, he said yes.
Okay.
So, and I, I'll just, I'll give you my word, I'll have a better understanding about that in next week.
Perfect.
And, and report back to you, yeah.
So, Beth, that's a very good question, though, because it just feels a little in limbo, doesn't it, you know, in this transition?
And that, that's kind of where the limbo's got us, it's got us real nervous, you know, when we have somebody in crisis, we, like, where do we go? You know, when I, when I have a kid, or they have an adult that's in crisis, we shouldn't be the ones trying to figure out where the new building is, or who's doing it, or what release of information we need. It, I think we just really need to make sure we all have the information, whatever that is, short-term, is it till September or December, whatever, but all our partners in the community, we really need that piece of information of what services do we have now? And when are they gonna change what services those are? So, yeah, 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 we can't run around with...
So, and if, if we could request, we, we want to see some overlap there, because it can't be just ending December, because it, it takes time to get everything in place. So, there has to be some kind of overlap there, because it's gonna take them a little time to get established and, and meet with everybody.
It will be, the end of the year will be here before we know it. I just want to kind of emphasize, reemphasize, we need a plan, a real long-term, five-to-10-year plan, and that's how we're gonna be, in my opinion, that's how we're gonna be, better be able to compete for those funds.
Absolutely, thank you.
Welcome aboard, this guy.
Anything you need from either one of us for behavioral health, or if a committee is appointed, we're, we're there.
Okay.
So, I have a quick question, maybe a little bit off-topic, but the blue building in Port Orford, there was some discussion about this a couple meetings ago, maybe it was longer. Is that still CCH building, or is that a county building?
That's a CCH, CCH building.
Okay, all right.
Right next to the library.
Don't give up on that, though.
What's that?
Don't give up on, don't give up on that yet, though.
I'm just, I'm looking for options too, like Wendy, so...
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Connie Hunter?
What? Thank you for letting me come up and talk a little bit about behavioral health.
We're breaking protocol a little bit here.
Thank you for that. You may or may not know that Curry Community Health has a Behavioral Health Advisory Board, and I'm their chairperson, of course, they only meet quarterly right now, and of course, things are up in the air. We don't know as much as we'd like to know about the programs that are being developed. But one thing that I wanted to bring forward, and I think I've shared some of this with Commissioner Chris, and maybe, maybe some of the other commissioners, about Lipsec in Douglas County. And they had two subcommittees, one was housing, one was homelessness, and they merged those. And they are having a meeting coming up, and I like to, because of my work in nonprofit development, community and economic development, when I see a good development model, I want to put it out there for discussion. One of the things that I always noticed between Curry Community Health and Lipsec was it didn't have that ongoing connection. And I'm wondering if a subcommittee might do that work, but it also brings those people to the table that will be talking about solving the homeless problem too. So, that, I've been watching the Douglas County Lipsec development for a while, and the two, the two subcommittees that they put together, it makes more sense. And I wonder if it might make sense here, that's all. And then, another piece of the puzzle is, a lot of people don't know that I worked for the development arm of the largest community mental health center in the state of Arizona in the mid-1980s. And I mentioned that one time to Father Byrne, he said, "Well, that took place a long time ago." Well, it did, and so did the work of Jesus Christ. But what I wanted to point out is, we actually litigated 50 individual cases against the state of Arizona for not providing for behavioral health for individuals. About the third day on the job, my boss, who was a Korean Army in-country veteran, sat me down with the Chairman of the Board, and he, who was an attorney, and he said, "We're gonna sue the state of Arizona on behalf of individuals, and your job is to put together a coalition of community-based mental health providers, and find individual cases to sue the state if they're not doing their job." We litigated 49, we litigated 50 cases, we won 49. Some of those cases were veterans. So, the Office of Community Care is actually a result, a long-term result, of us flipping the responsibilities from being the state's responsibility to back on the VA. Because when we litigated those, you, having veterans in that mix, we knew that if the VA didn't perform, that responsibility falls back on the state. So, we have some co-authority things that we're not doing real well in the state of Oregon. So, my, I know we're gonna be getting money for behavioral health. There's a piece of that puzzle that is missing. When I worked for the Development Department, it was called Phoenix Behavioral Health Foundation as part of Phoenix South Community Mental Health Center. But that particular piece of the puzzle was tasked with finding the money, addressing public policy, changing policy, that's why we sued the state, and creating new resources and new programs. And one of the things that I know, when you're talking to Curry Community Health, and I have this conversation with Mayor Ron Head and Scug also, Curry Community, pardon me, Curry Health Network has a foundation, they are looking to do more in behavioral health. She, Ginny has committed to being part of the zero-suicide framework, and addressing that and implementing that. She's already committed to that via email to me. My point is, can we do a lot of the development work that needs to be done for behavioral health, kind of like a council of governments, but your coalition of community-based mental providers, mental health providers in association with the foundation at Curry Health Network? Does that make sense? In other words, what we did on the development side of things, for example, you may have heard me talk about Teen Lifeline, we started that, we incubated that program, and it's now a statewide service deliverer for the whole state of Arizona. So, those kinds of things, without a foundation to do that, fine-tune development work, find the money, use the money, create coalitions where you can not duplicate services and so forth, those are the kinds of really groundbreaking pieces of the puzzle. But without that emphasis on the discipline of development and those kind of relationships in the community, it's gonna be small baby steps, and we need to take bigger steps, that's my point, I guess.
We will be calling on you in this process, Commissioner Herzog.
So, if I heard you correctly, I think you said that Lipsec in Douglas County is working very well with their behavioral health, which is ADAPT?
What they actually did was create a subcommittee, and so, that can, that creates the connection that didn't exist on a regular basis with, say, for them, Curry Community.
That is really good news, so if, you know...
They're already...
Fairly ADAPT is gonna, you know, and, and I promise, if I have to, I'll drive to Roseburg and, and meet this gentleman, but, face to face, but for them to have that, you know, foresight to, to... We just, we just gotta get him here, so, onboard and, and up and running, so, that's good news.
Okay, thank you, Connie.
Anyway, thank you for tolerating me so much today.
You're welcome. We're gonna go to item 7D, Roadmaster Signature Authority to Approve Change Order Number One.
We've got C.
I know, but we're gonna, we're gonna come back to that.
All right.
South County paving project in the amount of $74,842 for tidewater contractors to grind and pave lively lane. Roadmaster Christiansen, welcome.
You're tired of him walking back and forth and-
I got Kerry sitting there doing the same thing, so.
I guess he's bigger than Kerry, so.
Good morning, Commissioner, uh, Curry County.
We're sorry to keep you waiting.
Curry County Road Master Richard Christiansen, no worries. I don't mind. And, uh, yes, for, for this first item, this is a change order for the 2021 paving project for $74,000 to grind and pave Lively Lane. And, uh, we're currently under budget. We had budgeted $600,000 for all this work, but we downsized two roads. One, we chip sealed and saved money. Another one, we found out that CTR was no longer be using their Wilderness Road facility, so we decided not to spend as much money on a road they were no longer gonna use. So, uh, anyways, I'm looking for board approval for this change order for Roadmaster Signature Authority for $74,000. And we'll still be under budget for my capital improvement paving plan.
Looking for a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion Board. Call for the question, please.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Item 7E, Approval of 2021 STP Fund Exchange Agreement Number 3269 to Exchange, uh, 320, 3,000 in federal fund for 304,000 in state funds for South County paving projects. Roadmaster Christiansen.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you. And this is, um, the federal government gives a Curry County Road Department an annual allotment from $250,000 to $300,000. This year is $323,000. And there's a process where we could fund exchange that money by paying 6% to the state and take that money from a federal, um, delivered project to a state-delivered project that we're allowed to deliver ourselves. And we, we wanna use this money to pay two-thirds of our cost of our 2021 paving project. So, I'm looking for the board to sign the master agreement with the state. And then I'll forward that to the state, and then what they'll do is they'll mail us the $304,000. So, when we deliver our project, uh, that $433,000, I was telling you, 304,000 of it will be paid by the federal government. And so, I'm looking for, uh, the Commissioners and County Council to sign the master agreement.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
Move approval of 7E?
I'll second.
Discussion Board. Call for the question, please. Staff Jesuit.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Roadmaster Christiansen, thank you again. Before you leave, we had item 7H, Discussion As To Capping The Road Fund. Commissioner Herzog, did we pull that or postpone it, table it, whatever?
No, but, um-
Why, he's here?
Well, yeah, but I, 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 I think we definitely gotta keep track of this discussion action items, and I know Kerry's been-
Well, he, he can leave if we do to him now.
It doesn't matter to me. I can wait. There's other folks.
Yeah, I, I think we gotta be respectful of how we got it in order.
She's just going back to her office and working, but that's okay, so you, I'm sorry, I, I thought we-
No, it's all good. Thank you very much for approving my items today. Thank you.
Can you stick around for a little bit?
Yes.
Okay.
Item 7C, Safety Committee Recommendations to Review County Personnel Rules Regarding Specialized Job Certifications. Kerry Dexter, Safety Committee Chair.
Good morning.
Hey, hi.
Good morning. Kerry Dexter, Safety Committee Chair. So, at the recommendation, recommendation of the Safety Committee, um, it was unanimous that everyone would like me to present this today on behalf of the committee as a whole. We submitted an ARS, and this is just the, um, a general ask of the board from, from the committee to, at the recommendation of the Safety Committee held on August 12th, 2021, to bring this matter to the BOC as an action item regarding Curry County to review the current personnel rules regarding performing what would be considered a technical or hazardous task that requires a specialized job certification. And by that, we mean a journeyman's license, contractor's license, electrical license, plumber's license, or heavy equipment operator's license, just as an example. I don't believe we have a specific provision in that, and there were a few committee members who brought, um, a concern just in general that if we hire someone who is required to have that license, then we know right off the bat. But, um, possibly looking at someone who would be in an under 18 years of age class doing work, looking at licenses they should have, or if someone is furthering their job description and requires one of those, just to really make sure that if we're having them do those types of work as a liability on the county, that they have those certifications. And it kinda has a part two with the maintenance department. I'm just gonna give you an example, so this makes sense. This isn't really technically part of this, but, so they do a lot of work within the county, but we only have a couple maintenance members. So, when we look at doing large projects and whatnot, when you're looking at a project that requires someone to hold a specific license that's outside the scope of what we may think is a department, "Oh, hey, we just need this remodel done." And I don't think that they may think of some, an instance like that. We were just asking the board to consider maybe just having something in place, so it's in there, so we can refer back to that for, for projects and job descriptions.
Great. And just so you know, also, we've had a meeting about, um, having an actual, um, where did it go here? We have actually, uh, done up a Curry County General Work Rules and Safety Policies um, that we will be giving to HR. Um, I can forward this to you. It's a fun read. Um, I did it up a couple of weeks ago. I think it's 18 pages. Um, and it's, um, I'm not gonna take the credit for it. I basically plagiarized a couple of other counties on the language of this and inserted Curry in a lot of spots. But, uh, we've looked into a lot of this, and it makes sense. Um, we'd like to send this to the board, and I think County Council already has a copy of it, as he's a member of our Safety Committee. And, uh, for you to read it through and make any comments on for maybe our next meeting. But I would like to see if we can get in place, um, something as, as, uh, Ms. Dexter just stated, that, that we have the, you know, some of these rules in place already.
Yes, and this is just a recommendation. I know I've said before, it's kind of just repetitive, but we don't create policy in the Safety Committee, so this is asking to bring it in front of the board from the Safety Committee, uh, with your approval, to then take it to HR to be looked over and work through it, and then create possibly in addition to our policy.
And that's what we'd like to see, is this is an addition to the policy, is that we require certain things, licensed contractors and those kinda things. And something else is that, you know, a couple of the teens that are out working, and God bless them, they're working hard, but they might've been doing some things that-
Questionable.
Should've been licensed contractor to do, and they were doing, so, um, not putting any blame on them, I actually appreciate them doing that, but, uh, to protect the county, which is part of our job, I think we need to get some of this placed, uh, in language and, and writing.
It would be a good thing for down the road too, because I know that, over the past few years, I just kinda know a little bit of knowledge here, because my husband's a contractor in the county, so I'm aware of a lot of new contractors we have within the county. And so, I think having a better reputation for some of these things also gives us the ability to see, maybe if the county can have more contractors to get a, a contractor at the county for bids and repairs, because we seem to be doing more projects. And it would be good to see who else is out there and have a more variety of vendors that we're doing bids with. I think this is just one thing that would, would aid with that as a whole. So, that's all I have.
Before we leave, though, uh, I think we wanna vote on this now?
Well, I was gonna ask, Mr. Chair, do you wanna head nod, or a vote, do we need a vote?
Let's do a vote, guys. I, yeah, either way it'd be okay. Um, let me read that again. Safety Committee Recommendations to Review County Personnel Rules Regarding Specialized Job Certifications. Ms. Dexter, Safety Committee Chair. Looking for a motion?
So moved. Second.
And that's on the Safety Committee Recommendations? Maybe I should say plural there, huh?
And jobs, uh, certifications.
Good. Can you second it, Commissioner Herzog? Thank you. Uh, call for the question, John Jesuit.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Yes. And before I step out, I'm sorry, I realize I said something, and I wanna clarify that, um, just because I don't wanna be taken a certain way. I, my spouse is a contractor within this county, but it's a good opportunity to reach out to other contractors, not my spouse.
No, no, that's-
That's a conflict of interest, so I stay out of that. So, I just mean in general, I would like to say, so.
No, that's how I interpreted it.
Completely. So, he's not done work for the county, and I do not, you know, I just thought about that as I said it, so.
Well, the way, the way you clarified, that's the way I interpreted it initially, so, but thank you for that. No worries whatsoever.
And I would have no problem with your husband submitting a bid, it's a small county.
I'll leave that up to him.
So, the other information you gave me, I think yesterday, on the, uh, you know, the COVID-influenced, uh, impact, or impacts on our employees, okay? When they, uh, when they get sick, when they get shots, when they, you know, time off, do you, did you want me to read that now, or did you? We could do that in executive session, bring it back to the board. What would, what would you recommend there?
I leave that completely up to you. I just wanted to bring that to you as a recommendation of just personal good advice that I could offer that would benefit, I think, Curry County and the county as a whole. And as a good example, so I will leave that completely up to the board.
I'll, I'll, I'll read this real quick while you're here, and then if I misunderstood or something, you can, you can, uh, straighten me out there. So, um, whether a person is pro-vaccine or not, I believe there are individuals who worry about getting side effects. Let's talk about our county employees now, of not feeling well the day after their shots. And that's been the case for several of our employees, uh, within the county, uh, some, somewhat similar to when they get their flu shot. Looking at our current temporary COVID personnel rules, we do have COVID-19 administrative leave. If you have contacted the virus, though a conversation may consider this, employer notification of exposure to risk, medical referral, return to work options. If the county management has knowledge that employee may have been exposed to COVID-19, and the employee's department head shall notify the employee within one day of the county obtaining such knowledge. Am I on the right track here?
Um, yes, I believe. That was our second conversation. Yes.
Uh, so here's just one more, uh, two more sentences. Once the county has notified the employee, the employee shall be required to notify a medical professional for testing. The employee shall report back to the county if they fall into any of the categories in Section D above and proceed accordingly. So, what we'll do, you know, and then you also said if they, you know, if they have to take a couple of days off, how, how they get compensated, and, you know, just kinda the way I, the way I, uh, understood you is it was a good way for the county to kinda update this policy, and, you know, with, in, in relation to COVID and some of the things that we're, we're, um, experiencing now and likely doing in the future. So, we'll just come back on that. And, uh, and I thought, I, actually, I thought I copied and pasted the other information that we talked about yesterday, but I didn't. So, you know, we can update that-
I know I sent you an email, which I think describes it a little differently than that, so I think if you wanted to talk with the Commissioners in executive session, that pertains to a personnel policy. I'll leave that up to you. And that was just, uh, just a recommendation. Some counties, um, provide that, some don't, but it's just something for the three of you to consider.
I'm looking at the letter you sent yesterday morning at 10:00 AM after we visited, so I, I apologize. I need to spend more time on that and incorporate it with these other suggestions, and we'll do that and get it ready for next week, if you're okay with that.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
Thanks, Gary.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Kerry.
Okay, so now we're back to Roadmaster, or excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner Herzog on the, uh, capping the road fund.
Well, is G, um, G Chair?
Okay, I, I'm just trying to get him back to his crew.
Oh, I gotcha.
Come on in, please. You know, I, he may not even wanna comment, but it's your, it's your art, uh, your information, so you take the lead here, please. So, we're going to item 7, uh, H, Discussion As To Capping The Road Fund Reserve, Commissioner Herzog, and we also have, uh, excuse me, go ahead.
No, I was just wondering if LT's his, uh, security in here?
Absolutely, he is. Lieutenant Helen Hensley, I just wanted to recognize you. Thanks very much for being here today.
Well, I wasn't really prepared to talk about this, but I, I can talk about it.
He'll, he'll go first, if that's okay.
Well, and, uh, just before the meeting, uh, Treasurer Barnes said, "Hey, I, I, I can do, I'm, I'm still working on some stuff as far as what's going on with the road fund total right now, and if, if it would be possible." And then, whoop! So, I, I, you know, he asked if I could pull it until the next meeting, and then, uh, it, it just went over my head, and I forgot to do that. So, but we can, we can surely discuss it, and, and and my whole deal on this is to just have good, um, discussion back and forth regarding the capping of the road funds at 20 million, and then, uh, just the funding of the Sheriff's Department going forward in a, in a tax measure, or some kind of, uh, uh, voting thing to the public. So, um, Rich, I can tell you're just ready to-
Yeah, I've been working on this, you know, independently, and I do have a kind of a vision and everything, and, you know, there's been a lot said over the years and, about the road fund, and wow, there's still 29 million in there. We've been doing a good job, and, you know, we should, uh, cap it at 20 million, and my thing, I think we should cap it at 29 million. I think, I think that what the road department's doing with the road funds is stretching it out, is working. And we're using it for master plan projects and grants, and we've been very fortunate these last few years that the federal government has given us, uh, you know, funds that we were not expected since the loss of timber receipts. You know, the county's running on a seven, eight million dollar budget shortfall. Half of that is the road department, half of that's the general fund. And my, my thought is, is that we should not expand any services until we have money for those services, and that we find a process to reach out to the public for, for a sheriff tax levy, or a general fund tax levy, that they would support. And I think part of that process is that we get as lean and mean as we can, and we live within our budgets, and that, and we see what we can do. So, the public could actually see that, you know what, we need money because we're living in our budgets, and we don't have the services that they want. And if they want those services, then we start working on those tax measures. That's kinda like the Josephine County model, you know? So, uh, I haven't gone to Josephine County yet to talk with them, and, but I'm looking forward to do that, and, uh, I'm in communication with Rocky McVeigh, and I just have a lot of irons in the fire right now. And I'm hoping to do all that this fall, and maybe, uh, maybe have a ta, a sheriff tax levy, uh, on the ballot, working with the Commissioners and the Sheriff's Department to, uh, go to the public for, uh, during midterm elections, uh, November 2022 is the goal right now. But I think one of the things we're gonna have this, this afternoon is a workshop about getting that lean and mean, and trying to get, uh, public trust, and they can see that we are downsizing our fleet, or making our fleet where it's self-functioning, and that's part of this process of stretching out the road funds, and trying to get to where the general fund, and taking lowering, uh, the impact of, uh, Gen, General Service Department needing vehicles from the general fund, and that we have a fund that manages itself using enterprise, and that's all part of this thing getting lean and mean. And so, uh, I think once we get to the point where the public sees that we are living in within our budgets, that they may be open to give a tax measure of some kind, whether it's a property tax measure, or it's based on consumption, or, or what. And, uh, but we're nowhere near there yet, and there's a lot of, uh, workshops I think we need to have in the next, you know, six months to try to figure that out.
Mr. Herzog?
Yeah, I, I, that, that says it.
Mr. Herzog, or, excuse me, Commissioner Pash?
Didn't we just talk about this, uh, the last meeting, or two meetings?
A couple meetings ago.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up again. I, I don't-
Yeah, I think it's-
You know, I don't want you scolded, or, you know, uh-
It's a good, good discussion.
It's, it's really important, and so, yeah, 30 days ago, two meetings back, I, I capped it at 20, cuz I wanted to transition between where the Sheriff's Department finds itself and a hopeful, I might even go out on a limb and say a likely, uh, voter program that, you know, option that would, uh, see where we are in law enforcement, but they're not gonna do it overnight, and I think that's why you're willing to spend the time, uh, to really research this and try and develop a plan, something that the, the communities, the citizens, everyone could possibly buy into. And you just mentioned, living within our means, a lot of- A lot of people in this building or in this two blocks would say, we are living within our means. I don't believe that for a second. And if you, if you stick your neck out there and say, no, we could tighten our belts right here and over here and over here, then they call you all kinds of names and stuff. You could put in Facebook prison. So I'm with you. Maybe we want to adjust that 20 million dollar figure. But again, I'm, I'm really interested in the transitional approach so that we don't get caught, uh, you know, and maybe it should be 25, maybe it should be 15. Go ahead, please.
Well, you know, this, we talked about this at the, when you approved the budget back in June and everything. And I think you, you have full control. And that whenever I bring something like I did today to you, I want to spend $75,000 to pave this road. You know, at that point, you could say yes or no. And the sheriff department, I believe, anything he spends over $10,000, he has to go through that same process or any department head. And so at that point, you look at that and, and is, is that living in your budget or not? And, and so I think that's when you, your job gets harder because now you're saying who could buy what and when. And you're, you're itemizing things. And that, and I think that's part of the process. And, and, and so I think that once we start living in our budgets and people in the public see that they're not getting the services that they need, like what Josephine County did, that they will, uh, support those services with a tax measure, you know, like Josephine County. So that's what I think. You know, Josephine County was successful, they were in the same boat as I, us. And I think that we need to conserve the road fund to the fullest extent possible because if we don't change, the road fund's going to be gone. And then all the grant opportunities will be gone. Right now, I look at 29 million, just say 30 million. You know, to me, that's almost $300 million in grants, okay? Especially, and we all know the federal government is putting a lot of infrastructure projects out there that, you know, right now, we're in a really good position to chase those funds, long as we have the road fund. But road fund's gone, all these master plan projects disappear. So that's what I would like to say is that, you know, conserve these road funds for the best use of the county, which I believe is going after grants and leveraging them 10 to 1. Thank you.
So, real quick before we have Lieutenant Hensley come up, uh, want to remember, Josephine County doesn't have a road fund reserve. There's only four in the state. And, uh, we're one of them. And that goes back to your predecessors. And so to see you, no surprise, guard it fiercely, I, I really appreciate that. The other thing, um, you, uh, back to living within our means, uh, you mentioned, uh, I drew a blank there, I'm sorry. That's okay, I'll just leave it, you know, good presentation, good response. Oh, I know what it was. So if the, uh, if the treasurer comes up and it doesn't really matter whether it's 29 or 31, uh, in my opinion, from what I know about it right now, what matters is, are we going to cap it? Are we going to have the courage to do that and say, okay, voters, okay, all departments, okay, commissioners, step up to the plate, get the job done. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one. So I'm saying, you know, why wait till we go bankrupt or till we're done? And we, now we have no choices. And so, uh, we all know emergencies are going to come up. And, uh, and I know we need a new jail, I know we need a new courthouse. You know, all these things require matching funds. And if you don't have them, those projects don't happen. So if you have a $20 million project and you need $2 million to build a new courthouse, I don't know what that's cost, but I'm just throwing numbers out there. And you could pay 10.27% of that grant, and now there's no road fund, what are you going to do? And also too is, if you limit it at 20 grand, what are you going to do? And so, and you know, and I think what Commissioner Pash said a few years ago, I mean, a few meetings ago, hit the nail on the head, is just because, uh, how I look at it is, the federal law says these funds can only be used for roads. The new state law says seven counties can use road funds for sheriff, okay? Now you're going to make a rule that says, no, nobody could use the money if it hits $20,000. So what, who usurps who? You know, state usurps your decision and the federal government usurps the state decision. So to me, it's like, we just need to conserve, live in our budgets. And, and you watch the, the revenue go out the door. And if it's going on something that you feel is right, then it's right, it's your decision. And so I'm just presenting to you all the time how I'm spending the money. Anything over $10,000, I'm bringing to you and explaining the situation. And, and you make that decision whether to, to approve that purchase or not. And so I think that's how the process works.
Hey, thanks again for hanging in here today. We're going to start trying to schedule you, so, you know, you and the sheriff and other people that have got multiple employees, uh, we'll get you in and out, so that, at least that's my, my preference. Lieutenant Hensley, welcome.
Thank you. Lieutenant Joel Hensley, Curry County Sheriff's Office, currently jail commander. I just wanted to bring up a point, talking point on this discussion of capping the road fund. Um, and it's, it's nowhere near a attack on Mr. Christensen or anything like that. But, uh, Mr., Commissioner Boyce, I was glad to see you pointed out, um, public safety is one of your number one concerns. And I assume that's also the concerns of the rest of the board, correct? So if we take something, I guess I'm going to get a little off track. Whenever I'm doing my position, I try to set it up for years down the road when I'm gone. The reason why the knowledge will be there, why we can do things a certain way, why it works a certain way. So somebody else can take it over and run with it. So whenever we're creating rules and regulations and ordinances here, we're also creating it for down the road. So right now, I'm, I'm happy to say that we have a board that supports law enforcement, but it hasn't always been that way. So later on, somebody could use this rule or law as a, as a tool to defund law enforcement. So if you had the road fund, let's say we picked a number of 20 million, 25 million. All of a sudden, this other board down, down the road decides, you know, we're going to allow, uh, the roadmaster to replace five bridges, just pick five. Oh, now we have no money for law enforcement because a funding solution has been solved, you know, found. I appreciate the conversations about finding a taxing district to fund us. To, because, as ever since I worked here in 98, I've been talked about being laid off, being put back in the jail, been back on patrol, laid off out of detectives. It's just, we need a constant funding source. So I'm glad that conversation is happening. I do think the board has made it very clear to the citizens out there that we don't like spending the road fund. We don't want to do it, we're going to try to find a way to fix it. The workshop later on today is hopefully going to help out with some of that. You know, we plan on participating in that. So I also don't want us to create a situation where we inadvertently defund our patrol division. So let's say we have a winter like we did back in the early 2000s. We have a bridge up Hunter Creek that washes out. Mr. Christensen must access the money. He must put out the funds. No grant funding is available. We're mid-year and all of a sudden, we're at that $20 million mark. We're going to get it back from the feds maybe in two, three years. But right now, we have effectively defunded law enforcement because there is no other money. And we have instituted this rule that we can't access those funds anymore. So that has me concerned. That has me concerned as a commander and as a citizen. Sorry, I'm a little skin dry.
You can take your mask off, by the way, I'm sorry, I'm in.
No, unfortunately, there's an administrative rule out there. As elected officials, you guys can, um, have, um, very strong political opinions. As in, the sheriff can have his. I'm just an employee, so I'm going to, I'm going to wear mine. But anyways, that's my concern, is that I don't want us, I think you guys have taken a very strong stance that we don't want to access these funds. And I think we picked a number that we'll never hopefully get to. But we cannot control anything. You guys have seen my medical budget for the jail, correct? Okay? I do my very, very best to dial that in. I think I've hit the number once or twice, you know, but medical I can't control. We can't control the weather, we can't control the roads, we can't control what's going to happen. For all we know, there might be something where the federal government comes back and says, you know what? Curry County, you held on to this money too long, we're going to take half of it back. Again, we've defunded law enforcement. So I think you guys taking a, a stance of where you are, very stern. Every budget, we talk about it, we don't want to do this. And, you know, sir, you, uh, we had several meetings where you dialed down that number. That was great. You fought hard and citizens knew what your message was. But at the end of the day, we still need sheriff's deputies, we still need a jail, still need dispatch services. Until we find that funding solution, which we'll support, we're always here. I'm always here to help and give out anything I can. I think putting a hard limit on it will tie our hands one day.
Thanks.
Hang on, questions?
Oh, no.
You know, tying in the, probably not likely, but we might look long-term in tying in the jail courthouse project with long-term funding. Now, that would be outside of taxing district, I realize. But, you know, we talked about, you had a very good idea. I think it was you and Brad Alcorn had the idea of doing the video and we're, we're trying to get over that. I'm very interested in, in, you know, selfishly taking some of your time and showing us what you showed us two months ago when we, we did the view. And I, I think once the citizens see that, it is going to turn some heads in a positive way. And, uh, so I'm, uh, I'm optimistic about that. It's on my list and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get there in the next 10 days or so. So that, that was one thing. And then, uh, um, yeah, just primarily the, at some point, maybe the city's paying for the jail. You know, there's, there's services there. That might be a long shot too. I don't want any hard feelings, but yet it's an expense that the county bears. And that ultimately comes back on the road fund reserves, uh, sooner or later. So that's all I have and, and.
Right, and I appreciate that conversation, sir. And just like I'm saying though, that we've unfortunately have had to use those funds. Unfortunately, the county isn't, uh, self-sufficient to the tax base to support the services we provide or that are needed to provide. Since I've been the jail commander, the, the, uh, demands upon the jail itself have doubled, if not tripled, because of stuff we have to provide, how we provide those services and how we deliver those. And even with other county services going away, we were finding ourselves in a position that we had to contract services. So costs go up. And unfortunately, we, we did have to use some road refund funds to balance our budget. I'm just saying, I don't want us to see a hard limit, that all of a sudden, we have to hand out notices to deputies because we didn't foresee something, but we have this hard, hard limit that we can't get past. And unfortunately, it's taken four, five meetings or more than that to get to this point right now, this discussion. I could see it even being longer to reverse a, a hard set ordinance if we set it in place. That's all.
Hey, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
So we're at 11:30, uh, people. So now we are at?
G?
G, 7G, uh, Director Curry County American Rescue Plan Fund Committee to initiate committee proceedings. Council Pope?
Yeah, and this will be real quick. In our last meeting, we appointed the members to the, uh, American Rescue Plan Fund Committee, but we didn't really get them a, a go date. So, um, I'd like permission to, to set up their first meeting. That way they can elect their, uh, their chair and secretary and start moving forward on their own.
So moved.
Second.
Good job. Any further discussion? Call for the question, please.
Mr. Pash?
Yes.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
So are we at 7K now? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Bear with me one second. So, you know, it skips a page here accidentally, not a big deal, but we have a new declaration. I remember we did this over almost two years ago to the day, how excited we were. And, you know, my, my background on this was, goodness, there's been a lot of people that have re, throughout the county that have really worked hard on this. And all the issues related, uh, way before that, including, uh, just a couple of days later, the housing study presentation come out and I sent a link in the gender outing slip. But we're not making a lot of progress. And so this, uh, this committee that we're, we're working on, that all of us have tried to help with and assist and support, um, just to have an updated emergency housing declaration, I think, uh, tells the world, tells our citizens, uh, that we, we are very determined. And here we are. So, you know, I don't know if you want to spend a lot of time talking about this. We didn't update the, uh, resolution in the matter of declaring a housing emergency for Curry County for 2021. So we're, we're, I'm open to suggestions here, I'm open to discussion. I've got, uh, law enforcement, housing and fire awareness is my, personally, my top three concerns and issues for Curry County. And I'm, I, I really want to encourage the people that have put their heart and soul into this and, and just keep, uh, supporting them. So, uh, board, what do you think? Commissioner Herzog?
So this is just to, because, you know, I looked at that, um, ordinance or whatever, just, it's like a two-year thing and it needs to be revisited and re-voted on. So I'm in complete favor of this and I would move that we update it, you know, as, for another two years or, I think. Is that the life of Anthony or?
It can be any, it can be any duration. We actually included in this, or I thought we did, uh, the 2019, no, that's a different, I apologize. That's a different subject. But we can do it every, any timeframe. I don't think our figures are, uh, totally accurate here two years later. We might need to review that. Again, we just want to send a message to our citizens. We understand, my goodness, when we try, well, we'll go back to law enforcement. We find somebody we really want here, uh, you know, certainly the healthcare providers, and they can't find a home. They can't find workforce housing. You know, there's been quite an emphasis on homeless housing. And I know a couple of the current Curry citizens, uh, housing committee members we have say, hey, you get the workforce housing squared away, a lot of everything else will fall into place. And I agree with that. Not saying we don't want to spend time and, and, uh, research on the homeless part of it for tiny houses or whatever we have to do. So that's, that, that's just my take. And I, again, I'm proud of what we did in, uh, August of 2019. And, uh, I appreciate the board's support on this. So moved. Commissioner Herzog?
Second. I do have some discussion.
Discussion, yes, please.
You know, I, um, driving from Brookings to Gold Beach, 101 is, is like an RV park. And it used to be when Pistol River filled up in Myers Creek area, it was because the, the wind was up and it was windsurfers from the Columbia River, but it's not anymore and it's... And I know that's, that's state, ODOT, and, um, but we just have a, we have a huge housing crisis and, and I'm not saying all those folks are Curry County citizens, but, um, just throwing that out there that.
We actually, uh, I really appreciate you bringing that up. We had a discussion, I'm going to guess, a year and a half ago, maybe late 2019. And we had state police here, we had sheriff, we had Oregon parks here, we had, uh, I don't know, beyond that. But we, we went nowhere. We identified the problem and it's growing. And of course, no difference between Gold Beach and Port Orford. And it's a mess. You know, it's become a, they have quite a network. They actually get on social media and say, yeah, I stayed there for four nights or whatever, hide behind the bushes, what, you know, all the above. And so, oh, I see, we have former, uh, Code Enforcement Director Fortman here, he was at that meeting. He's pretty adverse in, uh, what we're dealing with there. And so, um, yeah, it's, it's a shortage of RV parks. And then it gets back to, the next step is, uh, uh, we also have new Director Tavon here, Code Enforcement. And, uh, can't remember if it was her or someone else, mentioned the abandoned RVs that we have. And what it costs to get rid of those. And unfortunately, a bill in the Oregon Legislature, uh, through the full session, uh, earlier this year, didn't quite make it to providing money to, you know, like up to a thousand, an RV to remove those. Uh, actually, I think it was David Fortman that, uh, he's, uh, he's well aware of the growth in those abandoned RVs. So, you know, it's, it's an issue we need to keep trying to deal with and not get sidetracked or discouraged because it's just going to expand. Yeah.
There's all kinds of signs that from on the road.
When they tear them down.
Well, no, they're still up. I took a picture of one because, uh, we had another incident in Harbor, but it says, no parking from 10:00 PM till 6:00 AM. And, you know, I guess this would be a question for state police or state, um, ODOT. So anyway, didn't force that. this would be a question for state police or state ODOT. So, anyway, didn't force that.
Now, I'm going to refer to you as investigator Fortman for the district attorney's office. Would you like to weigh in on this a little bit? Would you mind?
Excuse me. While he's walking up, I'd just like to say, at a meeting we had the other day, OSP was in the room, and they said it would sure, certainly be helpful to have signs that says, over, maximum stay is 24 hours. That's, if they notice somebody more than 24 hours, they can then ask them or make them move. So, if those signs were welded to the guardrail, so they couldn't take them down, as we discussed a few years ago, that's an action plan that we could...
Okay.
...address.
And we talked about that, didn't we, at that meeting, about making them steal, you know, so they can't, less having a cutting torch, you know?
Well, these signs are standing right now. They're...
Yeah, but that's because they keep putting them up. Am I correct on that? I might be wrong.
No, well, I'm sorry I missed the beginning of the conversation. That's been an issue that's been going on for time immemorial. The problem with code enforcement on that, I'm just going to go into our side, that's OSP right-of-way. And code enforcement has not been involved unless it's a safety matter on OSP right-of-way. OSP, even down to the, well, the state, even down to transient camps down in Harbor alongside the gas station, has taken a position of not citing or doing anything. So, our hands have been tied. And it's not 24 hours, I'm kind of curious to that ambiguous comment, because there's a couple RVs there, I've seen there over a year.
Oh, yeah.
Keep moving, within a half mile of each other. So, 24 hours isn't it? You have an ordinance, the law said, from 10:00 PM till in the morning, and it's never been enforced. So...
And you're saying that's a, that's a state police responsibility?
It's their property unless the county enters into an IGA with them, giving us authority to enforce it on a statute. Code enforcement can remove or tell people, the camping ordinance is, if you are camping on private property, then the county has an ordinance against it. So, oh, that's not county property, not private property, it's state property. So, the article doesn't apply.
So, Commissioner Pash, the state police that you talked to, if they had different signs, then they could enforce it? Is that your...
Well, no, I think, as Mr. Fortman just said, there's some ambiguity in the language and how to enforce it. And, you know, the one comment was, if they had signs, it would be, it would make people easier and even deter people from parking. And to your thought on people just moving, that's what one of the officers said was, they're here today, and then tomorrow morning, they've moved 15 feet away. Well, legally, they moved. So, there's...
I got you.
There's confusion in that language as well. So, you know, I think it's up to the county, as Mr. Fortman just said, to perhaps look at conversations with OSP, to give us an IGA, and that we can go in and enforce and work together, you know, the state with the county, to clean some of this up, because if we don't, it's going to continue to deteriorate.
If I may add one more in here. People camping in trailers are a problem, and I'm going to take it off OSP, well, it's actually their turf, too. Social Security Bar. There are two trailers sitting out there right now that the community is up in arms about. Trailer, RV number one, we tried to tow away last week, the tow truck broke down. We, the only option is to bring a tow truck in from Bandon, and we're looking at a $5,000 tow bill to tow it, store it, bring it into CTR, and the destruction cost of another thousand to $2,000. The second RV, which applies to the issues that you're talking about on the road, the people are living in it. And we can't tow a vehicle where the people are living in it. We, the county would be sued, they would have an instant back injury. So, every time we go out there looking to try to tow that vehicle, people go running up the street and jump into the vehicles, like they did to us the other day.
Uh-oh.
So, there's a financial issue I'm trying to bring up, of what, who's going to pay for this, other than issuing them citations? It's an expensive process. And it's a process that we need to get our partners in. Again, OSP shares jurisdiction on Social Security Bar, as does Brookings PD, I'm part of it, as does the county, I'm part of it. And we really need, maybe the Board, to ask all these groups to sit down and come up with a policy to deal with it. So, we quit going, it's the other person's job to get it off.
Question? First, I want you to make an introduction here. We're anxious, if you could. We haven't actually introduced our new code enforcement director to the public. So, and then I'll ask my questions, if that's okay? Please.
All right. Well, I'm...
Hold those microphones down.
Yes, sir. All right. Well, I'm Amanda Trover, and I am now the code enforcement officer for Curry County.
Welcome.
Thank you.
A big welcome.
I appreciate that.
Do you have anything you wanted to add on this discussion? I know you have been here very long.
I have not, but it has been a thorn in my side already for the couple weeks I've been here. I get probably four calls a day about the Social Security Bar. So, it is an issue. We see trash debris from these citizens in one of the trailers. And it's a, it's a place where we want our citizens to enjoy, go out, fish, you know, and enjoy the place. And the residents who do live in that area are just in, up in arms about it. So, we need to find a way. It is, right now, financially straining on our department. Our, my budget is not as big as it should be to make these big charges, to get these units off of the bar. I mean, I do two, three, four of these a month, I'm out of money. So, it's a conversation that we're going to have to sit down and really look at. And I know that we spoke earlier last week, and you said that you had an idea about a grant or something that we might be able to talk about to fund some of this, which might be an avenue that we want to go down. So, because the money is a huge issue.
Well, I do, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna, I'll after you.
Okay, fine. Either way, well, there's two sources there potentially.
Okay.
And, you know, our TLT money has to be for tourism promotion. We have some extra money there. And boy, sometimes if you can get the, get the money to, you know, I think if the citizens heard $5,000 to move one, they'd probably go, oh, my gosh, that's, that's a bit heavy. But the money could possibly come from there. It would take some council research, of course. The other one is getting money into your budget through the American Rescue Plan. You know, that, abandoned RVs can be COVID spreaders. There's the, you know, the unsanitary parts of it all. You know, I'm really glad, I mentioned again, Commissioner Herzog brought up the, it's ruined our viewpoints, and it puts more pressure on you that, away from other tasks that are more important or more, you know, higher priority. So, those are the two things I wanted to run by you. And, you know, obviously, as I want to make sure the public knows, it's going to take some research, may not qualify, but it could even be under an infrastructure part of it, through the ARP. So, got my fingers crossed. Go ahead, Mr. Fortman. Pull that microphone closer.
You brought up the transient funds. What, another case I'm going to say that we all should be familiar with, we have a gentleman that's been living in his truck on the side of 101 at Petroli.
Jim.
Four months. And my department was getting a call, or two, or three a day, because he's living there with a dog. And, so, to make my point, again, OSP won't move him on, and we can't do anything because he's taking care of the dog. He's doing good. But all of these abandoned vehicles and all these, what is it doing to our tourists that are coming into our county and seeing this? The people come to visit our parks and make that entrance in a Social Security Bar and see these. We've, we have fought with, fought, we have dealt with RVs that are falling apart and leaving pieces and have towed them away. But this is a, it's a health, it's a safety, it's a, it's an income for this county, because I'm frankly a little bit embarrassed that some of the images that we portray coming into this county, from just the problem you gentlemen are talking about today.
And I can speak towards that, because I am new to the county. And it was a shock to see so many people living on the side of the road. I've never, never witnessed it in my life. And so, it is, you kind of get a, oh, my goodness, what is going on in this place? So, as an outsider, driving by, it's shocking. So, it is something that I would like to be able to address in my position, and I just need help from the Board to do so.
Great. Go ahead.
Question I had earlier, you said, we're going to move, you know, get a tow truck out of Bandon. Is that because of the size of the RV, or?
Yes. We know anecdotally that some nonprofit organizations bought a bunch of used Class A RVs that didn't run, and they gave them away to the homeless. And they towed them out into the community. And we have been chasing them for months, from one spot in the community to another. And as Commissioner Boyce points out, or Commissioner Pash, sometimes they know enough just to move at 15 feet, and we get to start all over again on these things. So, it's a problem. And because of the size, they can't get them up on a, on a flatbed, and the tow truck, the tow truck commercial one comes out of Bandon.
Okay, that's what I was, yeah.
Mast towing. Mast, yeah.
The other, the other expense that we do, because they're being used as residents, is that we have been towing them to the county road department and storing them out there to give the opportunity for the people to come claim their property out of there, versus towing them straight to CTR and having them destroyed, which might potentially destroy somebody's property in their vehicle. So, it ends up with two toes, a storage time, and then a destruction.
Do you, so, do you want to take this project on?
Yeah.
You would need to contact the Oregon State Parks, the Oregon State Police, code enforcement. Who in the world am I leaving out?
Sheriff.
Sheriff.
Goodness sakes, sorry.
And state parks. State parks now, in the summer, is finally doing some patrolling on the corridor.
Okay. All right.
I'll do what I can to help.
Well, you, you would, I see. Big job.
Well...
You know, big job. You recognize that you brought it up, and good for you. Sicum, I think. Mr. Barnes, please. Didn't you have some pictures when we had that year and a half presentation or workshop, I think it was?
Yes.
Okay.
Before, David Barnes, before I became the county treasurer, I had some extensive discussions with ODOT and OSP about this. And as it turns out, there's an OAR that states that you are not allowed to park on the side of a highway. That's number one. Number two says, except in rest areas, as defined in another OAR. That OAR defines rest areas as being any scenic overlook, safety pullout, or any of the, basically says that any of the spots along 101 here are exempt from that law. Back at the, last year around this time, I believe it was, state parks and ODOT had gotten more money to put up more of those signs, beginning at Pistol River and going to the north end of the county. When we were discussing this, and I alerted them that this is illegal, and your signs are illegal, and they're not enforceable, under OAR specifically, it says that they're not enforceable, they didn't put the rest of the signs up. There's nothing really by statute. And then when you add in the others, the, what came out of Salem recently and out of Idaho, about not people being able to use public lands, and you not being able to throw them off of public lands, you now have something that there's not really much that can be done about this. You know, it's just the way that it is. Like Commissioner Boyce said, this hit the social media and other websites, the Boondockers websites last year, about come and stay along the Curry coast, you know, with beautiful, camp along the ocean, you know, wake up to the sound of waves, and people did. And they came in droves. And that's why we have what we have now. But, from what I've read and from my conversations with ODOT and state parks, those signs are unenforceable, and a parking ban along any, in any of those pullouts is not enforceable. There is no law behind it. So, just makes the problem that much more difficult to try to resolve.
Can't charge them?
Excuse me?
We can't charge them?
No. No, sir. It's, it's...
That's because of the Ninth Circuit Court, I believe, ruled. That's why you brought up Idaho, I think.
Correct.
Yeah, come on, you don't have to leave.
Okay, even before that, though, there was an existing OAR that allows it, so...
So, it sounds like a legislative remedy. And you know what? That means we wouldn't get anything done, we won't get anything done in the short session next year for 2022. So...
The only clarification I want to make on the Ninth Circuit Court about using, about using public lands for camping, Treasurer Barnes is correct, except that the court upheld that it is from 10 o'clock at night to 8 o'clock in the morning. No one has the right to continually camp on a piece of land. They have to vacate it every day.
And that's what OSP said. It has to move every 24 hours it has to move.
Yeah, OAR doesn't address how often they have to move. It just says that it's permissible to sleep overnight, but it doesn't say how many nights. So, that would be, you know, I know BLM has, what, a three-week limit on the amount of time you're allowed to stay on for, on federal forest land.
Two weeks or three weeks.
I'm not aware of any limit on this, but that, it was silent on that when I, every time I've read it.
At what point does a county take action, though, because it's a public health issue? That's what I want to... Sanitation?
This is, code enforcement has dealt with it on a sanitation, if we catch somebody dumping their black water onto the ground. And of course, everybody says they have a container to take it to the dumps. So, we are been doing, watching for that. And when I was doing my commute up here every day, I would check all the units.
Let me do it at 2:00 in the morning, when you're not there. I do it at 2:00 in the morning when you're not there.
I think if, given the Ninth Circuit, the only other proposal here, and I wasn't where the OAR is saying on the scenic ones, was like, what we do now, is we tell transients camping on private property, on county property, county right-of-way, North Bank Checko, for example, you got to be gone at 7:00 in the morning. Okay? We come by here, and code enforcement could come by and start writing citations. It's kind of difficult for the professional transients, because they won't even open the door for you. But, that would be the only other solution, is have code enforcements, with the permission of OSP, start making contact with all the RVs that are on the property, on the OSP right-of-ways, and say, you need to comply. You can't be camping here. Can't set up your tent and your generator and all the other things that we see out there.
So, the theory there is you might be able to agitate them enough to, so they'll move on?
You just define code enforcement as...
Can't imagine that.
Agitate's a bad word, but...
No, that was a, that was a good line. Thank you.
Can't imagine some bright lights and sirens at 2:00 AM in some of these remote areas wouldn't maybe get aggravated enough to move people along.
Well, so I don't aggravate my replacement here. Again, the law says they can camp there at night.
Right.
So, I would never say, expect your code enforcement to come out at 2:00 AM and start moving people off the roadway.
So, anything else, Board? Thank you very much.
I think you got a motion and a second.
Oh, for you to work on this?
No, just for Kay, just for, we got to, we got to finish the vote. This was just discussion, right, at Kay? Seven K?
Right, we're updating the emergency housing declaration. We didn't vote on that, snap, Jethun?
No, this is all...
Is everybody shaking their head? No.
Yep. This was just discussion. I apologize, I started it.
That's okay. Call for the vote?
Mr. Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, guys, see you back here. We'll recess for lunch, and I'm going to ask everybody back here at 1:15, please.
So, when is the suicide proclamation going to be written, that way?
Uh, what do we do?
Oh, we...
It was clear back up at the top. We could do that real quick.
Yep.
We could do that real quick. I got to go clear back to 7:00 A., which we changed.
Yeah, we moved him up, and I...
Gordon, have you been waiting? I'm sorry. Why? I'm sorry, wow.
Yes?
This is the one where we've done this four years in a row, but I think we forgot to include in the packet, uh, the year two thousand eighteen?
Oh, it's, it's been done for probably seven or eight years.
For Curry County?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
My, my memory is, is failing me there, so.
Every year.
Okay, would you like me to read the proclamation?
I would for the, uh.
For the record?
For the record.
Okay, Curry County proclamation, September as suicide awareness and prevention, uh, plus the action month. Whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And suicide is a major public health issue that requires vigilant attention and preventative action, especially during times of a pandemic. And whereas forty-five thousand people lost their lives to suicide in 2020, including eight hundred and ninety-seven Oregonians, and whereas in 2019, suicide was the leading cause of death for age range fifty to fifty-four-year-old Oregonians. Wow. And whereas in 2019, suicide was the leading, whoops, excuse me, I'm sorry. Whereas twenty percent of Curry County eleventh graders reported seriously considering attempting suicide, and nine percent actually attempted suicide in the year 2019. And whereas each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire community. And whereas research shows that ninety-five percent of adults would do something if someone close to them was thinking about suicide if they only knew what to say or do. Now therefore, the Curry County Commissioners hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-one as the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Plus Action Month. Be it for the resolve that the Commissioners encourage all citizens to learn the warning signs, trust their gut, and use that information to ask a troubled friend, colleague, or family member. Are you okay? You have, uh, you have trained us well, Gordon.
First of all, I want to apologize that I thought I had put the numbers that you had asked for in the packet. That chart is not here.
Okay.
Uh, the numbers for the last fourteen, uh, fourteen days is three hundred and eight. The numbers for the fourteen days before that was a hundred and five. And anybody can find those numbers at zeroattempts.org/transmissions.html. It's updated every day.
Great, thank you again.
September is Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, which offers a chance for frank discussions about suicide and a time to bring awareness to the issues from multiple directions that suicide is a serious public health issue. Facts, suicide rates went down from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty for the first time since two thousand three. We found, however, an increase in rates of suicidal ideation, up ten point eighty-one percent, suicide attempts, point, uh, four point sixty-eight percent, and self-harm, nine point sixty-three percent during the COVID-19 pandemic. Key, key ongoing uncertainties are no longer, are the longer-term impact of the pandemic on suicide rates as we experience further ways of infection and as an economic consequences of the pandemic, uh, on people's finances and job immersion. At-risk groups who have been disproportionately affected by the pandemic include women, young people, those with pre-existing mental health conditions, those whose employment status changes, and those who, with lower socioeconomic backgrounds. Suicide also, uh, rates also, are also higher with vulnerable groups who are subjected to discrimination, including refugees, migrants, prisoners, indigenous people, and individuals from the LGBT community. Research shows that ninety-five percent of adults would do something if someone close to them was thinking about suicide if only they knew what to do. Sixty percent would encourage them to seek help from a mental health professional. Fifty-two percent would offer to listen to their concerns. Forty-seven percent would encourage them to seek help from a doctor or primary health, uh, professional. Forty-seven percent would stay with them until they could get help. And forty-three percent would tell them you're worried about them. And forty-three percent would help them take or make, uh, make it to an appointment. The majority of deaths by suicide are preceded by telling signs, whether verbal or behavioral. Every, even without knowing the list of signs, we have all experienced a friend or colleague who wasn't acting like their normal self. This is an opportunity to start the conversation by asking, are you okay? There are a hundred and nine retailers in Curry County who have signed up to provide crisis cards that you can keep in your wallet and a brochure with all kinds of information on what to look for and how to help and what to, and you can keep that at home or post it, uh, on, in your office. Find a list of these partners at zeroattempts.org/curry.html. And when you, and when you're there, thank the shop owner for making these materials available. Remember, trust your gut, start the conversation, and ask, are you okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval of, uh, discussion action item number seven A.
Call for the question, please.
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
We're recess, yeah, excuse me, Council Pope?
Um, sorry, I know everybody's getting ready for lunch. Uh, Dave and Amanda were gonna present to us during the executive session. So I was wondering if we wanted to go through, I'm not sure what their schedules is like for the rest of the day. Would you guys be able to come back later or?
No, we can do that now. Yeah, well, they're both here. Okay, we're going, okay, we're gonna go into executive session. The governing body will now meet pursuant to ORS 192.660, which allows the Commission to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media. And designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All of the members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the ES, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room.
Would it be possible for our road department to get a second-hand tow truck that could haul these and then we take them in and count them? If they have the bread, they get to pay for it and make them work.
Welcome back. It is, uh, one thirty, August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. We're just leaving, uh, executive session. Uh, what was the number of that portion of executive session? The ORS 192.660?
Uh, we're gonna go with B.
To B?
Yep.
Thank you, Council Pope. So we're asking the staff to proceed as directed. We're back into regular session on our general meeting. And we're at item seven, action item seven. Uh, is it O?
O, I believe.
Yes. Curry County Presidential Citizen Elected Official on Curry Employee Parking. So I'm gonna try and do this fast, guys. I took a whole bunch of pictures. I wanted to start the conversation on all the parking for Curry County. Um, including the big lot on the west end, excuse me, south end. I just cleared this out.
That's Curry General.
I know, I don't know what.
COVID parking?
Yeah, it was down here, maybe when we. Okay, so a little bit of controversy. The, uh, we, we have actually plenty of parking here. Uh, this commissioner sign on the left there, this is the number one parking spot for the number one active, uh, in-demand department, county department that we have. And so apparently that was claimed by Commissioner Pash. You heard some of the testimony this morning, public comment that, uh, commissioners, there's no seniority. Uh, but yet when we go to our offices, uh, we can, we can choose what we want. Um, and because we may be ahead of somebody that just got elected or something like that, so appears to at least be a double standard there. So I removed this sign here, commissioner sign here, because I made it clear through, you even heard, uh, one public comment this morning, the email that I sent, uh, requesting this to be left open for the public. Um, you know, this building was designed so we can see out and observe some of the people coming in. You might recall, uh, Commissioner Herzog, you helped somebody or you were walking with somebody in a wheelchair the other day, right about the time that, uh, the unwinding. So, um, going to the next picture here. The board did make a decision to put a twenty, two twenty-minute signs up here, not one here. This is the second best. Actually, if you get out of driver's story, it might be the best, this might be the second best. Um, because pretty much everybody wants to go through these doors right here. So I commend the board for the follow-through on that, uh, and facilities maintenance. Sorry if you can't read this sign, it says twenty minutes parking. What I had requested a month ago, uh, and the board decided to move people up here for the second option, or that time it was for two options. And there's been a lot of discussion on that. You see the letter that, uh, Assessor Cohen offered. Um, you know, this is, this is really tight territory up here and older folks sometimes. And I'm getting that way, trying to turn my head around so that I can see better and backing up. So the next one. It shows what, where the controversy was. I asked if Commissioner Herzog could move up one, that's clearly marked as a commissioner spot. And David Barnes, treasurer, could move up in that spot. Apparently there's some kind of a deal between Commissioner Pash and Commissioner Barnes. These are big rigs. And one day I parked my excursion there, same, probably the same length as these, because I was saying, okay, surely, I got all the emails that were very nice to Mr. Barnes. They said, gosh, would you mind moving up just one so that we can put, leave this open for the public, for the convenience of the citizens? You heard what the comment was this morning? That, uh, how dare I, what was I called, a liar by two different people? And, uh, you know, this is, uh, this is really sad that we're gonna leave this to accommodate one elected official, quote-unquote, appointed treasurer, and he wouldn't move up one. And there, it's been, it's been Katy bar the door. So I'm looking out for the public and, uh, it just, it just astonishes me. So here it is again. Um, same picture, my apologies. And here is the twenty-minute sign here. This is actually tighter than it looks. It is looking better than I originally would have thought, but they'll pull in here. Nobody's gonna use this, nobody from the public's gonna use this. They're not aware it's there. Um, at least I'd be surprised if it got any consistent use. So when they back out, they'll have to go this direction. And then when you come out this, I don't have a picture, well, no, I don't have a picture of it now, but when you come back down the, the north side of the building this way, there's a parking spot right here, and boy, it is tight. I always park it, uh, I measured it off, it's seventy feet, seventy-five feet away from the side doors here on the north entrance. That's where I parked for five years. So there's nothing inappropriate for me claiming the commissioner spot for the public. Bottom line. So I'm sorry it turned into controversy. I'm sorry that I couldn't get, uh, Mr. Barnes, Commissioner Herzog, to consider moving up one spot and leaving this for the public. And then the, I'll conclude with this, and that is, uh, all the parking we have for future, um, you know, I mentioned the big south parking lot. I mentioned right out here in front on the, between the courthouse and the annex. It could be much better organized for our employees. The east parking lot where this picture was taken from, uh, not inconvenient. You know, there was some notion that I defied the board, no, I just simply wanted that spot for the public. And I still do. I still think it's the right thing to do. And so anybody got any questions on that? Comments? Commissioner Pash?
Well, I want to clarify a couple of things. When I came here as an elected official, um, there were these three commissioner spots here, and no one parked in them. And Commissioner Boyce always parked in the side lot as he just, uh, announced. And Commissioner Gold parked up on Moore Street in front of the Colvin Building. So when I got elected and started parking, I parked where you see Treasurer Barnes' truck there. I never said this is my spot and that's it. I just, that was the one that was open and I got in the habit of parking there. And even if I would come in late one day or was, uh, and meetings in the morning would be there in the afternoon, that spot was, always seemed to be open, even if people were parked in the other two commissioner spots because Commissioner Gold did start parking down there. Um, that spot was always open and I, I was, I always appreciated that. So I never said it was my spot, but it was the spot that I always ended up in. Um, when Treasurer Barnes, uh, saw some of the issues I was having with climbing that hill, because it's a pretty steep hill, he offered to switch with me his assigned parking spot in the parking lot across from, um, the Moore Street building, which is in the sheriff's department area there. He said, Chris, why don't you take my spot, I'll take yours. And he did it as a kind gesture so I wouldn't have to climb that hill every day. That's how his truck ends up in that spot. What I want to say on this is that picture, I don't really believe does justice to two things. The steepness of that hill on the upside if someone pulls in, which most people will, it's hard to put, if you, if you're talking about senior citizens, it's hard to push your door even open on that hill, much less to get out and balance yourself so the door isn't slamming on you and walk around your vehicle. Where it, we, we as a board decided that it was much safer to be on the flat, level ground on the west side of the building there. Um, people could get out of their car in a very safe and level area and they could back out into that parking lot to leave. Here again, where, where Mr. Barnes' truck is, if most people pull into that, when they back up to leave, they're backing into an open-lane highway that is a blind departure. You're literally backing up into, uh, vehicles moving down an open highway with no shoulder, where at least if they were up in the side parking lot, they could back into a flat area, take their time, relax, and back out safely. Um, but I again just want to recognize that I never claimed that spot as mine. I always appreciated Treasurer Barnes doing what he did. I thought it was a very kind gesture. And, uh, and it just seems like it created something that didn't need to be. And I'm just, I'm not picking on anyone here. All I'm saying is I'm just surprised how much time has been spent on this, um, when we've got so much to do. The board already voted.
So, uh, but you are claiming it now. You claimed it last Wednesday when Mr., Commissioner Herzog came to my office. You said this is your place and that's why Barnes gets to stay there.
But I, no, I never said that. To who did I say that to?
Isn't that what the sheriff spoke up and said for you?
I don't know what the sheriff said for me. All I know is I, I don't believe I've ever said that's my spot to anyone.
Oh, so then, so then I could as a commissioner claim it then, right? Uh, for the public? Was there something wrong with that? Why wouldn't you want, why wouldn't you want to ask your friend, Mr. Barnes, to move up?
I'll tell you what I'll do then, I'll make a formal request. Mr. Barnes, you can have your spot back up here in the parking lot and I will move back down to the commissioner's spot if that makes you happy.
Will you move into the middle one?
I don't care.
We need to, because I'm never gonna park there, I never have parked there. Would you move into the middle one so that we could open this up eventually for the public? And by the way, there's not been any accidents here. And by the way, this spot right here, you can see how tight that is for the old folks. This section right here, that parking spot is now gonna get used. I think it could have been a very simple, my request a month ago, let's try this for two twenty-minute parking spots. Let's ask Mr. Barnes in your spot to move up one and Commissioner Herzog to move up one. That one never gets anybody any use in it because people pull up thinking, oh my, I got a good spot. And then they see commissioner and so they, you know, they gotta go somewhere else, way away from those two matching doors.
I've said all I'm gonna say, sir.
Do you have anything, Mr. Herzog? Okay, so we are, uh, what a disgrace for the, for the citizens. You said you would park, would you, uh, would you park in the middle one? You said you would park, would you, would you park in the middle one? The middle commissioner's spot?
I have no further comment on this.
So you're gonna hold that best spot? Okay. That's a, that's a surprise. No, it's not. Okay, so we're gonna exit out of this, and go to item seven P. Curry County, comment on the Rogue South Coast Multispecies Conversation Conservation Plan, Oregon Angler's support. Has the board had a chance to review this document?
From Steve Barland?
Uh, it's actually a combined effort from Steve Barland and, excuse me, Leonard Krug.
Yes.
Commissioner Herzog?
Yeah.
So do you support this?
Yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Do we need to spend any more time on it, gentlemen?
No, sir.
You need a motion?
Please, sir.
So moved.
All second.
Call for the question.
Hi.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes, that only took two minutes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Commissioner Updates.
No, sir.
Six eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You told us to keep it straightened out, we're doing it.
You did, that's good, thank you. Is that the April twenty-eighth minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So if we go. So on the April twenty-eighth minutes, item nine on Updates, B, Commissioner Pash spoke about liability issues, potential for lawsuits due to, I'm just quoting directly on, as recorded by Staff Jesuit. I'll start again, Commissioner Pash spoke about liability issues, potential for lawsuits due to an elected official temporarily suspending license fees, and a motion to censor Boyce, the motion died for lack of a second. So what we have, the policy that we've set in the last six months to a year is to record everything, word for word. So what I would like to do here is request that the board go back and stay with that policy and not be prejudiced against me, or have any kind of additional double standards. And I'd like to have in the minutes, every word related to the suspending license fees, that's your words, not mine, and have that recorded in the minutes. And I need support on that, and I'll tell you why, because you quoted Association of Waring County Council, Bovette, and he was appalled by what he heard, and it did, it made the county look terrible, could have cost us a three, three and a half million dollars for the jail courthouse project that David Brock Smith worked very hard on with Chief Justice Walters. So I'm asking the board to stay with the, new policy that they've set, and record every word that Commissioner Pash said regarding the lawsuits and the bad behavior that I had. I want the truth to come out, I want it to be open, I want it to be transparent for the public. Commissioner Herzog?
I, I don't, I don't have anything to say.
So do you want to support that?
Are you ignoring my hand here?
No, I'm going to the vice chair first.
No.
So you have nothing, okay. Commissioner Pash?
Okay, let me be clear on a couple of things. You forced Rob Bovette's name out of me. I was not going to deliver Rob Bovette's name to this, and you said, no, I want to know who said that. I want to know who said that, and I think you said that two or three times, and then finally I said, Rob Bovette. And what his statement was, when I said to him something to the effect, if, if a person was to, an elected official, I never mentioned your name or anyone's name, I said, if an elected official was to go to a restaurant in this county and say, you don't have to pay your license fees right now, I'm working on that, just stand by, what would you say? And his three words to me were liability, 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 and that's all I commented on. You're making it into much more than it was. Now, Mr. Bovette was actually shocked, yes, that I mentioned his name, but he never told me, don't mention my name. I never went farther than those three words. And if you had not pressed me and pressed me to get the name of who said that, I would never have revealed his name. Did it cost us anything with the three and a half million dollars that we got from the state on this? That had nothing to do with it. That was, that's a completely separate issue, and I don't know how you're bringing that into it. But as far as the minutes go, the minutes are a, are a, and a, what do they call it in the beginning of a? I can't think of the name. What is it? No, well, they're basically a summary, a summary of what the meeting was about. And, and then you go to the, that part of the video of the meeting, and you can hear the entire thing in its, in its fullness, so, and you can even see facial expressions and hand gestures, as I've noticed, Commissioner Herzog, you have a lot of those. Anyway, so you can see, you can see and hear everything that's taking place around that conversation. The meetings, as we've discussed and, and acted on in, for JJ, is just a, a, I can't, still can't think of the right word, but a.
That's when you start using your hands, that's what I do, so.
It's just, it's just a, a, a brief summary of what the, what that topic was about.
So when, so when Treasurer Barnes said that names he associated with Boyce was a liar, a cheat, and a thief, we made sure that every word was recorded. So I'll go back and get the words myself, if I have to, and say, I'll just ask you this question, Commissioner Pash, what was your objective? In going, did you really think there's gonna be lawsuits? Because I went to two restaurants and said, listen, I know you're really struggling right now, I know you just lost your primary chef, I know you're just opening your door and fighting to stay open. Pay us when you can, I'll be there for you, we'll help you anyway. And none of them got breaks, even though Josephine County give their restaurants breaks. Couldn't get it through this board.
To answer your question.
Give them a ten percent reduction.
To answer your question, did I think there was a possibility? Indeed I did, for three reasons, and this is three reasons that CIS told me.
Oh, okay.
Because I spoke with them first, and then they said they can't get involved with this, they would recommend that I go to the AOC about it. They're pre-loss, and they said that the, what you're opening to the county up to, and I don't, I don't even know if I can remember all three, but there were three. One being that somebody didn't pay their dues, so therefore the inspection wouldn't be done, and someone from the public went to their restaurant and got sick. They have no current inspection on their building. That person could sue the restaurant for getting them sick, and that restaurateur could then sue the county because someone said you don't have to have that right now. Another one was, somebody files for, or doesn't put in their paperwork on time, the state goes after them for not having proper licensing. And they then say, well, a commissioner told me I didn't have to do that, to hold on. So that person then loses their restaurant because the state pulls their ability to run their business, they then sue the county because they believe they didn't have to file for their license because the commissioner told them they didn't have to. And I don't recall the third one off the top of my head, but there was definitely three of them.
So thank you, I want the citizens to know, I never told any restaurant they didn't have to pay their fees, period. I worked with them, they went through an incredibly difficult time for 2020. Commissioner Pash's objective, I think, is clear here, now that he's even brought up county insurance services, was to destroy my good name. And I can give you another dozen examples, I won't take that time today, but it's all gonna come out as fact and truth. I was called a liar earlier today by two different public comments, absolutely, evidence-free accusations, tearing this county apart. When it comes to three and a half million dollars, AOC is a critical partner in this effort. So I did my best, and I think I successfully met offenses, because I've had a, I have had a good relationship with County Council, Association of Waring County Council for five years now, not to mention legislators, legislators that will help us. So.
Okay, so one.
Need to make a motion here to, you admitted to the word for word, which is what you promoted more than once.
Okay, what I want to say is, all I had to go by, and the reason I call CIS, is because CIS is our pre-loss insurance attorneys, that's what they do. They do pre-loss, they look at a scenario and say, oh, there could be, or there isn't going to be, a loss risk here, this is how you should act. That's why I called CIS, and the reason I called CIS was nothing that you said. It was a letter that the, all the Curry County commissioners received from a restaurateur stating that you had told him he didn't have to pay his fees to hold off, therefore he was not submitting his fees. That's what I went on, and that's the reason I called CIS.
You didn't do your research, Commissioner, to find out if that was actually what he said. You went on a third-party comment, and that never works as evidence, so.
I'm just stating the facts.
CIS, did they by chance tell you that it was silly, or absolutely irrelevant?
No, they did not.
Oh, okay, but they didn't, they didn't want to give you any position on it, did they?
They told me it would be best if I would contact attorneys with AOC.
Yeah, and so you give them the information, and so.
That's all I have, sir.
We gonna get a motion here?
Digging up this.
Oh, okay, it's my reputation, okay?
Court, your, your reputation is fine, let it, let it die.
Yeah, let it die.
Talk about silly.
Yeah. I'm sorry you feel that way, Commissioner, but I'm not surprised. So if it was you.
Point of order, please.
I would be fighting tooth and nail to help you clear your name, because I was falsely represented, falsely accused, and I want the minister to represent what was said about me being censored. Censored because I tried to help two restaurants. I was almost censored because I tried to help the public have a closer parking area to the front doors. Hung by my thumbs. So I'll make a motion that the words, that Commissioner Pash and whatever, whatever interaction the board had on nine A, April twenty-eighth meeting, liability issues, potential for lawsuits, motion to censor Boyce, be record, re-recorded word for word. No second. I think that ends our, excuse me, count.
Yeah, if we're not gonna make adjustments to those minutes, I think there should be a vote on if we're gonna accept them or not, since we moved it off the consent agenda.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from April twenty-eighth, twenty-one meeting?
Second.
I don't think we need any further discussion, call for the question.
Hi.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
No.
Motion carried two to one.
What an injustice. Go Curry County. Okay, are we going into Commissioner Updates now? Is that, is where we are?
Yes.
It looks like I'm first, excuse me. So I only have one thing, I think, and that is, maybe two. We had a river trip with Executive Director Gina Nikkel and her husband, just, it was a great day, it's the first time I've been in the Wild River section, I think, of the Rogue, for almost maybe a year. I actually invited Treasurer Barnes and some other people, and I finally ended up with a new friend from Eugene, Nelson Iggy, who is a wonderful human being, he was immigrated here, youngest of eight children, immigrated here to the United States, from Nigeria in nineteen ninety-seven. And so we had, we had a great day, and she's coming back to Curry County. I've had the pleasure and the privilege of working with three different Association of Waring County Executive Directors, directors in my five years, and, well, she's tops. And what they do for us at the legislature, what they do for us in the Rogue, the list goes on and on, certainly veterans, my goodness, they, they are so well organized. This is the very bottom of Blossom Bar, and it's, we just kinda snuck under the rock here and got it lined up with the current, and it was just a, just a special day. So one more picture, and I'm gonna go to Commissioner Herzog. What a motley crew, huh? Thank goodness I'm out of that picture. Rogue was pretty clear for July, July twenty-ninth.
Yeah, it is, beautiful.
So let me see if I had anything else, I think I was trying to keep it pretty. Still working on a grant writer, COVID relief coordinator, housing development specialist, everything else to wait till the first. Commissioner Herzog?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Pash?
I have just a few things. The housing issue that we are facing here, as we all know, is a crisis, and we all continue to work at it. I, along with Becky Crockett this week, had a meeting with a landowner in the county, and he owns land in North and, or Central and South County, and he is absolutely willing to sit and look at the possibilities of taking some of his land, which is substantial-sized land, and using it for development of low-income housing for the county.
Awesome.
So we are moving forward with that, he's asked for some, some things from Ms. Crockett's office, and as soon as we get that, I'm gonna keep his name out of it for right now, I can tell you all privately, but I'd just like to keep it out.
Sure.
For right now, but he's very interested in moving forward, and when asked, he said, of course I would, why wouldn't I? So that's the kind of person this man is, so wonderful.
Neat.
Second thing is, again, I'd like to bring up the possibility of having a five commissioner board, three paid, two not paid, for, for us. As we can see, so many things we could do with a five commissioner board, not having an administrator, just having five commissioners, that one of the greatest parts to that would be, is we could work together on something. You know, if, if one of us had an elective lipsick issue that we're dealing with with juvenile right now, we could actually sit in the office with people and actually work together in a team effort to get a lot of things done, and that way there, when we got to the meeting, it's basically ready to be handled. So I, I just think cities, a lot of cities do it, there are some counties that do it, and I just think it, maybe it's a good idea not to have the administrator that has, that's been handled, but to have a five commissioner board with three paid like we are, two volunteer, maybe on a ten thousand dollar a year stipend, and I'd give up part of my salary to do that. It would just make it so easy for the county to have so much more diversity in the board, and I think we could get a lot more done, you'd have five commissioners working for the county. So maybe if I, I might bring that back to the board under that with no administrator, it might be something that we could get on the ballot for next year as well. And finally, with my minute and seven seconds that I have left before our workshop, I just, I want to comment on the situation in Afghanistan, and I usually try and keep my personal feelings out of things, but. I won't even get through it. To see two thousand four hundred and forty-eight of our military die in the sand over there, in another estimate of twenty thousand of our troops be injured, most severe, we don't even know what this country and their families are dealing with. Because the people that are dead, they don't have a say in what happens in our world anymore. They gave their life, their government asked them to come and do a service, and they did it. And they died, they gave everything to do that. And you've got twenty thousand people that are injured, military people that are injured, not to include the civilians. And people don't realize what it takes to take care of those injured people when they come home. You know, they've been shot in the head, and they're literally sitting in a chair for the rest of their lives, drooling, or they've lost arms and legs and organs, and their whole life has come apart, and it's not only them, it's going to affect their moms, and their dads, and their sisters, and their brothers, and their wives, and their kids forever, until they die. And the effect that that has on everyone. And I'm not gonna blame a government, I'm not gonna blame Democrat, or Democrats or Republicans on this. What I'm gonna say is, when you have all of your generals, except for one, all of your generals saying, please, don't do it this way, and we do it anyway, and what this has caused, to see people, people say, well, it wasn't serious, you know, they don't know what they're talking about, to see people and to hook themselves to an outside of an airplane that takes off and, and fall to their deaths, you think them people want it out of their country? To see pictures this morning of women and children laying in the roads, beaten and bloody, and a firing squad, I saw on Fox News this morning, a firing squad with people up against the wall, and they were just getting ready to shoot. with people up against the wall, and they were just getting ready to shoot. And they cut the feed because they didn't want to watch that. To see so much of this happen, why did we go over there? Why did 2,448 people and 20,000 people die and get injured if we're just going to walk away and say, okay, folks, you're back on your own, and you're right back where you were, and worse now? Because you let the Americans in, now you're going to suffer too. I hope our government will do something about this. I hope the people in this country will have outcry about this and tell our government to please step in and protect those people and get our people home safe. That's all I have.
Amen.
Commissioner Pash, thank you. You see these advertisements for wounded warriors, disabled American vets, tunnels to towers, and yes, they are, sometimes three of their four limbs are gone. So it then, and they ask for $11 a month or something like that. Sometimes it's $19 a month. And the suicide rate goes up understandably. And it's all of our responsibility to take care of each and every one of them forever. Forever. And thank you again for recognizing, again, the long term where we might be headed with the decisions that were made in the last five or six days. So we're going to go.
If I could, I just want to make one more comment. There was a woman that made a comment on the news thing this morning, and she said, my son died 2,108 days ago, I think it was. And the war still isn't over for their family, and it won't be for the rest of their lives.
So how about if we have another moment of silence? Please. Thank you again. Okay, so we're going to go into our workshop. We're only two or three minutes early, late. And hang on one second. Workshop, it is August, excuse me, August 18th, 2021, Curry County, Oregon Board of Commissioners. So we're going to go back into executive session. There's no one to press here. So we're going to be going into executive session 192.660 to A, to H, and finally, to E. So Counsel Pope, if you want to. And then we added one too, didn't we, on the request for independent investigation?
Yeah, it was 7N.
Yes, so we actually have four items. We already got, we already did one.
Yeah, we did B.
But you said that was B, so it wasn't on here.
So we got three items.
Yeah, and sometimes if there's more items that would fit under the same exclusion, we just list it once.
I should have helped you with this.
Okay. So we're going in?
Okay. So are we okay on our recording?
Well, we need to kill the feed, though.
Yeah, we need to kill the feed.
Okay, it is 4:41. Curry County, Oregon Board of Commissioners, August 18th, 2021. Just coming out of executive session. We are asking staff to proceed as directed. We're back in our regular session. We are looking at items, item 10. Hire orders, new hire, appraiser, trainee.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call for the question, please.
Commissioner Pash.
Yes.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Item number 11, other, we need to vote on a new board, the chair and vice chair, Curry County Commissioners. Nominations are now open.
I nominate Commissioner Herzog for chair.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Or call for the question.
You can say that.
Vice Chair Herzog.
We should be doing that.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Chair Boyce.
Abstain?
Motion carried two to zero.
Nomination is now open for Curry County Board of Commissioners, vice chairman.
I'll nominate Chris.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
Commissioner Pash.
Yes.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Abstain?
Motion carried two to zero.
And before we adjourn, do you have anything further, Commissioner Herzog?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pash?
No.
Thank you all. Good meeting.